Bring to the cloud. All right, Mr. Chair, you're ready to roll.
All right, so I'm being six thirty on Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three and have in Quorum. I'll go to item one and call the Bridgewater Planning Board to order. Before we proceed to item two, I'll just read a quick notice in. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance in accordance to the provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to the governor's approval of a supplemental budget bill. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Specifically, this further extension allows the public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present. At a meeting location and to provide adequate and alternative access access to remote meetings. The language of this extension does not make any substantive changes to the open meeting law. Other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address questions through the chair of the board. Additionally, we'll note a few. Following items. At the start of the meeting, I'll announce the name and then the the member, the 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 number of members that are participating remotely. Such information must also be recorded in the meeting minutes. All votes will be taken through roll calls. Members of the public body can either raise your hand or state a question in the chat feature when we have public comment. You must be clearly audible to each other and members of the public at all times. You must also state your name and address before stating your question or your comment. The bridge of the following Bridgewater Planning Board members participating remotely, I'm Patrick Driscoll, the Chair, Mr. Raymond Gemian, Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair. Mr. Stephen Geller and Miss Astor Rojas. Those are the five voting members this evening. The alternate, the alternate members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are MJ Spagon and Mr. Edward Haley. During the meeting, again, all votes will be roll call and you can you can dial in. And ask your question by hitting star nine or raising your hand or entering into the chat feature. So that being said, item two on the agenda. Is our first public hearing this evening. This is a continuation. This is zero corporate drive. Map eighty-three lot eighty-five. As a proposed hotel for Claremont Bridgewater Hotel to LLC to site plan review and a special permit approval under under. Section ten point six site approval and section ten point five special permits. Section six point O general regulation, section nine point four plan development district. And appendix B table of dimensional use requirements. The way the meeting will be held this evening is we will ask the proponent to make their presentation. Well, then. Turn it back to the board and have the board and the town staff have a discussion and ask questions to the applicant. And we'll then open it up for a public comment, public input, and again, just state your name and address before stating a comment. So. At this time, at this time, I'll turn it over to the applicant and their team and they can make their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bill Lovett and I'm with Claremont at Two Lake Shore Center in Bridgewater. Thank you again for your time this evening and the opportunity to be back in front of the board to follow up on our previous meeting. I'm joined tonight by Ed Brennan and Larry Solv. So I'd like to start this evening. We we were able to see comments and hear comments from the board last week or at our previous meeting. And just wanted at a high level to touch on a few of those items that hopefully will answer a few questions that were raised by the group. Either at the board level or in the the public comments that were posted. And then also cover some kind of what I call housekeeping items with regard to updated submissions, et cetera. So first, one of the questions that had arisen was with regard to the water and sewer. Component of the project and the the project was permitted originally for up to a hundred thousand gallons. With water and with the addition of the the both home garden and we did some interpolation based on the residence in that's in place. And we're anticipating it would be about approximately, you know, fifty-six to fifty-seven thousand gallons per day with. All the projects and properties in Lake Shore Drive. The with regard to the sewer, the design capacity, so the way that the project is calculated based on title. Five is a twelve thousand one hundred gallon dispersment and again, with the ability to access the. The actual flows and verified by the town and the water department bills, we anticipate about sixty-two hundred and sixty-three hundred gallons of sewer being generated from. The from the proposed hotel. And the again Claremont had provided the bringing the storm water over Route twenty-four in the past. To to provide the ability for shore connections in this neighborhood. Another question that arose was with regard to the hotel use and a PD. The the PD very specifically defines a hotel use and a motel use. And motel hotels are permitted within PD. A hotel is a facility offering transient lodging accommodations to the general public and providing additional services such as restaurants, meeting rooms, entertainment and recreation facilities. A motel is defined as a facility offering transient lodging accommodations to the general public with most rooms. Having direct primary access to the outside without the necessity of passing through the main lobby of the building. There was a question with regard to that coverage. So we're first, the hotel is allowed, even if it. It was the twenty-five percent coverage was applicable, we would still be. A total of about just under a hundred and fifty thousand square feet between the two hotel uses. Which is well below the the twenty-five percent threshold that was referenced. Also wanted to note that with the with regard to. The ongoing MIPA process, the wetlands, we did since the last. The last hearing submit for an ally and we are and I'll touch more on the MIPA process shortly. But we are still in the process of the MIPA reveal. Our question arose with regard to the historical in archaeology with on the site. We engaged PAL, which is a credited. Agency that works and we've been working with PAL for a number of years at this point. On the project, there were two key components. One, there was a question with regard to the granite. The granite formation, I guess I'd call it. It was determined that that stone chamber, that was the word I was looking for, sorry. Is not a potential significant cultural resource. It looks like it was a root cellar historically. So again, no, it's been determined that there's not been historic or historical important use there. And that was has been documented. There was also. You know, we've we've engaged, we must engaged in a data recovery plan relative to any archaeological artifacts. That has demonstrated on the site and we've been working with the Aquina Tribe to actually relocate a number of. Conditions. With regard to, there was a comment or comments with regard to the changing of conditions on the property economically. Just to touch base on that in the in the decision by the planning board, again, this is one of the original decisions or the original decision. There was a note that various laws have. Allow for adjusting to changing market conditions and conditions of the site not known at the present time for the other similar reasons accordingly. Prior to applying for building for initial construction. For changes to the exterior of an existing building and additional to the substitutional changes to the building envelope. For additional or substantial changes to exterior improvements such as parking or previously developed lot, this should be submitted to the planning board. The planning board recognized in nineteen eighty-eight that these changes may be required. To the plan development to adjust for the market conditions, other similar reasons not known at the town to the board. With regard to energy efficiency and charging stations, we are preparing the building for. For solar on the roof and we will be including. The electric vehicle charging stations and we'll prep for additional electric vehicle charging stations at the property. We also were able to reduce the parking. That was a concern as well. We've reduced the parking from a hundred and forty-four to a hundred and thirty-three spaces. With the hopes. That, you know, at some point in time, that could be shared parking between the hotel and some future use not known at this time. With regard to MIPA. The, just to clarify the. So we are engaged in the MIPA process. The MIPA process is ongoing. We have received comments with regard to our MIPA submission. We actually had a call with MIPA today and we're working through the responses that we will be providing to MIPA. That's an ongoing process. We anticipate that the and it's a separate process from from this application. We need the approval of MIPA prior to any state permit being issued, however. It does not preclude the board from issuing this permit again. We do anticipate that we will be resubmitting or not resubmitting, but we'll be submitting our responses to MIPA. In the next thirty days, they'll review those and then. We anticipate they'll issue a certificate at that point in time. There was also a comment relative to basis species and we can appreciate that and, you know, we will undertake reasonable steps. To implement to avoid the the spread of any type of. So that was a sort of a general update on the. Some of the questions that were that arose either from the the board meeting or from. The common public comments. Then if I may, I just wanted to update some of the additional items that were provided. With the the since the last hearing, so. We have submitted a landscape plan as well as the lighting and photometrics plan. We submitted a revised civil plan showing the emergency access gate and then MUX box. I will share, I can pull these ones up in a few moments, but we have, we did a. Conceptual plan of the gate which for the emergency access of off of Old Pleasant Street. And that is being reviewed now by the fire department. And upon their approval, we would we would finalize that and show that on the plans. But just to be very clear, and you've probably noted in the traffic study which was submitted, all of the traffic for the property will be off of Lake Shore. And the old post road entrance, which is on the plan, will be for emergency access. Again, there'll be a gate there with a MUX box unless the fire department chooses. Some other application of the MUX box. We, this the revised site plan does include a sidewalk along Pleasant Street. As I mentioned before, we did submit our NOI to CONCOM. And. We are scheduled for a hearing for that on July twenty-seventh. That I've just referenced the traffic study. The traffic study has been submitted. Storm art calculations were also submitted. The, there was a request for the first floor plan of the hotel that has been submitted. We, we did provide a site plan. It was page three of the civil plan replaced three of the civil plans which shows the entirety of the project. We provided a more detailed economic impact study showing the short term and the long term impacts of the development of the property. And. Think that that was primarily, I I hope I didn't go too fast. I was trying to be respectful and and timely, so happy to. Demonstrate, show anything I'd like to see or answer any questions. From the in the group. Thank you.
Mr. Lovett, do you, do you want to go over the site plan or anything? Or do you want to turn it up at a board board questions or what do you prefer?
I'm happy to pull up if the the site plan, if I may, to walk through the changes, the. The we've the staff had some very good comments with regard to the site plan, which we've incorporated and I'd be. Appreciative to be able to show us.
Sure. Shane, you need to bring that up or share the screen?
Uh, they're available to share the screen and.
Bear with me one moment. You're able to see the site plan?
One sec. Yep.
Yes. Great. So you'll see some some pretty substantial changes to the site plan. We, and I can zoom out. So you will notice the access from Old Pleasant Street. As I said, this is strictly going to be an emergency access. This upon approval of the the gate. Here, this is the anticipated gate detail and this is the location for the emergency access of the gate. Again, upon approval, we will. Incorporate that into the plan. We did effectively flip the building. Previously, the entrance had been on this side of the building, you know, facing out towards the east. With the comments from staff and with the primary. Access or the not primary, the access coming off of Lakesford Drive. We've actually flipped the building around. So now the front door of the building is actually facing into Lake Shore Center. Which we're looking, we're excited about. So this. These were some pretty major changes that allowed, you know, for us that we're allowed to make here. Otherwise, as I mentioned, we reduced the parking by eleven parking spots. We were able to make sure that we were setting ourselves back as far as we could from the. From the property in the wetlands. Any specific questions relative to site plan? There was a comment with regard to snow removal and snow storage. We will incorporate that into the next set of drawings. It's not on this plane, although we do have the dumpster pen. I also will note that the EV charging stations are not yet located on this plan. They will be located on the plan. We've begun coordination with the consultant regarding. The whether we're going to be an additional transformer and where the best location for those EV spaces will be. So this this slide shows the overall. Access entrance, again, the entrance would be off Lake Shore Center. There was a question with regard to the the first floor of the hotel. This was in a previous package that included it again here. Again, the entrance facing east into Lake Shore Center. There was a comment with regard to lighting from the center. It was from the staff memo. We, we, I think we have a little bit of work to do on the the entry drive and. Just to make sure that we have full coverage with lights along this entry. We also have. Landscape plan. And then the elevations. So happy to answer any specific questions.
So at this point, I'll open it up to the board for questions for. Mr. Lovett. Or the, or the the development team? So if no one's gonna go, I'll start. Mr. Lovett, is it the the entrance onto the park and ride? Is that required? And and this might be a question for Mr. Tanzi or or Mr. O'Brien as well. Is that required to have that entrance there or could that be eliminated?
I think it's always safe to have two forms of egress for a building of this size, especially for fire apparatuses. Having a MUX box air allows for the, not to say that this building is not going to be sprinkled, but having the fire apparatus to be able to access that point. As well as a a regular customer access it from Lake Shore Drive. Our primary concern in terms of having a a fire gate there was to prevent traffic from going down Old Pleasant Street as that. That connection with Pleasant Street is very inadequate and. I don't think fifty more vehicles per day at that location. As well as the potential of having it be a cut through of even access in the office space. Pairs well for that area without some sort of light incorporated there. So. I think for a fire safety purposes, a knock box in the fire gate or suffice well as well as allow for access to head to the site quickly.
All right. And the 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 original special permit allowed for a hundred thousand gallons of water and sewer, you know, on each side. What what is the the current actual use now for the Claremont properties? Do we have any idea?
I believe Mr. Lovett stated a number earlier. Could you repeat that, Bill?
Sure. It's based on actual consumption from the from the water bills. From the town, I believe this was verified by the town as well. It's approximately fifty-six with the with the addition of the Hilton Garden Inn. It'd be approximately fifty-six thousand five hundred gallons. The Hilton Garden Inn is approximately will be approximately sixty-two hundred.
Does that include the residential units that are up there as well?
It does, yes.
I I guess my question back to that entrance is how how would the town control that if if that's? I mean, it just becomes an enforcement issue, right? If that's open all the time, you know, do we have?
It won't be open all the time. That's why you have the knock box down there. I mean, that's that's common practice. With facilities like this. I mean, if the fire department deems that they don't need that access point, then that can be eliminated, but. As Shane stated, you know, typically for emergency purposes, you know, if the entrance for an ambulance was blocked getting in from Lake Shore, you want to be able to give them an alternative. Access point, but at no time other than an emergency should that gate be opened.
Mr. If I may, you've gone through it too quickly. But the anticipation is that this would be the detail in the fire department. We will incorporate this in. We've we've sent it to the lieutenant at the fire department for his review, but the expectation is this is the gate for something similar to this. There's there are different kinds. There's something like this, which has a knock box on the side, which would have a key. I've seen others that a fire truck could just drive through, but a normal car could not. And that would go here. So, you know, traffic to the.
All right, great. And then the the landscape plan was the plan that was submitted today, correct?
Correct, yeah, and I have.
All right. What else? Any other board comments or questions to this point?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have a few. One, I believe it was mentioned that the. The Indian sites were. Out of the area. We did get a letter. I don't know whether. It was seen by. We did get a letter from Corey Pierce from the. Narragansett Indian tribe. And they show some concern about the project. They say to dismiss the circle historical present presence of the Massachusetts Wapinawg and Narragansett Native people to this land is shameful. You approve the destruction of the stone chamber and fragile ecosystem for one generation wealth you contribute to the race of our historical pathways. Have you guys seen? Mr. Lovett, have you seen that letter?
I do not recall.
Maybe you can come out and comment on it next time.
Also, what is the date on that letter?
The date is.
We received the, we received it. We received an email today and additionally to that, to. I know we received this probably around May. We actually have the letter. We have someone named Duncan. We have a correspondence. From PAL that was provided to the board in May after the last meeting. So that does go into that stone chamber that was referenced.
And I think in the letter that or the email that Mr. Jamie just referenced, it also acknowledges in that letter that the state historic. Office of Preservation. Does not recognize the chamber to be a significant historical asset. So I mean, you know, I appreciate the position of of the tribe, but. I think that the, you know, the applicant has been, and I've had experience with the Poconocas and Narragansett and the Wapinawgs who all claim that Massasoit was their sacum, so.
Earlier, I believe on one of the early comments, there's a question about the fire hydrants. I I take it they've been put on to the plan?
Maybe Mr. Silva can respond to that?
Yeah, yes, there is water that this water comes through the site. Comes from Lake Shore, ties in there, comes through the site and also connects back out. To Old Pleasant Street for for looping purposes. And along that way, there are hydrants that are internal to the site.
Then just just a couple of general comments. One. I I really, we really need some of the responses from the boards, in particular water and sewer, because I know they've. They've indicated some concern about the both water and sewer, and I think we need some response, written response from both from them to indicate what they think. Also, I just want to comment to the applicant that the new zoning. That the board has allows for mitigation for developments like this. So I just want you to make you aware of that, that. For developments like this. So I just want you to make you aware of that, that. There may be some mitigation requirement here. That's all for now.
Any other board members at this point?
Um, mine, I have a question. So. Obviously, we all know that there have been lots of. Emails that we've received that we've been able to read through residents. Not, or being in opposition of this, requesting the board to, you know, not approve this to go forward. Could, could, could you? Is it fine to ask if you could just elaborate on what you think the benefits would be since? The town residents already have lots of worries and concerns.
Mr. Jiskel, can I just address that?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Early.
So for an application to either be approved or denied. The planning board has to find certain findings of fact. And those findings of fact for denial would have to be that, you know, somehow it's not consistent with the original special permit that was. Approved in nineteen eighty-eight, that it was not consistent with the current comprehensive master plan. Or that it's not consistent with. Existing zoning and bylaws and regulations. So on either side of that. It has to be clearly articulated by a board, why they're either approving or not approving. So, you know, as Mr. Jiskel pointed out initially. You know, they do have a cap on how much water they can withdraw and how much sewers they can discharge. We have verified independently on the water bills that we pulled in terms of. What the water consumption is. We don't separately meter. Wastewater discharge, but we assume whatever came out goes back out or came in goes, goes out. So they have not exceeded that a hundred thousand gallon per day. Yeah. And that's something that, that we're certainly concerned with, but. You know, again, the, the parameters to approve or disapprove are, are set forth. So. Not liking something is, you know, I'm not suggesting that that's your position, but just making it simple. You have to have some basis and you are a trier of fact in this case. So you have to have some basis in law. As to why you're approving or not approving something.
Thank you.
Any other board questions to this point?
And just for additionally to, the applicant did provide an economic impact page as part of their submittal as well. So that's them providing their economic impact to the area.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Silver, can I just?
I see if I can get to Mr. Jamie's question.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Mr. Jamie, it asked about mitigation and I, I would say to you that one thing to consider is that. There was a substantial mitigation that was done in, in advance of the.
Mr. Silver, I would not go there right now. Mr. Silver, I'm gonna cut you off. Please don't go there. That, that's not germane to this conversation. The, the, the fact that the applicant had to make an investment into the pump station and bring the force main there. Was a condition of them being able to do the forty Bs. Let's just be clear on that and let's not bring it up.
That was not for the forty Bs.
That was part of the.
It was the original office still in the nineteen, in two thousand.
All right. So any other board questions or comments for, for the team at this point?
I don't know at this time.
All right. So I will, just before we open it up to public comment, I, I will ask that if you want to make public comment, please do so. Please state your name and address for the record before making your comments. And, or your statement. I would also ask that if it's a repeat comment. Either say that you agree with the prior comment or you keep it short. And I would also like to note that we have received. A number of pieces of correspondence in regards to this project from, from the public. That has all been disseminated to the board. The board has, has reviewed that. We won't be reading them into the record tonight, but it is noted that we did receive all those pieces of correspondence. I believe Mr. O'Brien has also shared those. On the, on the town website. In a, in a specific link, a packet, and he can provide some information on that, but. We encourage you to make your public comment, just state your name and your address for the record. So. Mr. O'Brien, if you want to manage that, if you.
Sure. If you could raise your, if you, if you are want to speak on behalf of this project, if you could raise your virtual hand or state that you want to do so in the chat. As Mr. Chairman Jiskel has stated, we have disseminated all the information and public comments received via email. And that has been provided to the board and as well as available on our website under public comments for this project. So if you have any additional information and if you provided an email, we thank, we thank you for your comments as well as if you provide. Not try to reiterate those comments, but try to provide additional information beyond those comments. So we do have one virtual hand raised and we'll ask Gene to state your name and your address and, and state your comments.
Hi, my name is Jean De Batista. I'm at two sixty Lakeside Drive in Bridgewater. And that's one of the neighborhoods that's affected by this project and the greater project. I wanted to comment the, and ask the question. Has this project been looked at in the greater context? Of the overall plans that this developer has for this area. Which I believe are incredibly dense and cannot be supported by this area. The other thing is, when you look at, I'm going to go into some specific details. When you look at their traffic study, for instance. They looked at their own entrance. They didn't look at how they're affecting the entrances of other, of other. Places that are affected by the traffic flow. That is something they did in their wider. Project, but the, that actually does affect the neighborhoods around it. Our particular entrance to our neighborhood, there's only one. And that particular entrance has a higher crash rate that was not taken into account. Nor was the effect on our neighborhood taken into account by this hotel. And then my other comment is when you look at these water, wastewater, so on and so forth. They have now separated out this one building. From what is a massive plan of development and. Which will most likely one hundred percent exceed those requirements. My other comment is that Bridgewater has changed very significantly since nineteen eighty-eight. And that includes massive growth, strain of town resources. And I do think that should be taken into consideration. Also, Bridgewater has put forth a. Very comprehensive master plan, which I read majority of. And it's a great plan, but it talks about the need. To balance this type of development, especially the density of development. With environmental considerations and with considerations of impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. You can see from all the letters that were provided that. The neighborhoods that are surrounding this project are not in favor. Many of us are business people. We are not emotional about this. But when we look at the overall facts, we're very concerned. And I, you know, and you know, the, and. That is why we're writing these letters, because there is a much bigger project that is being considered here. When you even look at the traffic impacts they reported. They didn't take in their planning, their impacts on the, on, in the future on the neighborhood into consideration. They're only talking about this building. So unless they've abandoned all of their other plans. The over, this project needs to be looked at in the context of what they're planning in the future. So that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
We have a, we have a Bernice Morrissey with her hand raised.
Hi, yes, Bernice Morrissey, one fifty Lakeside Drive. I just want to. Spring off a couple of things. The changes in conditions matter. Well, if, if this is written into the law that. The changes of conditions apply to things that have changed since nineteen eighty-eight, when the first permit was, was approved. What about climate change and factoring that in? Because that's, there's been big changes in that regard. This, this week alone, we've had the highest temperatures all around the world. So the impact with the loss of trees has been felt and it's being felt in the neighborhood. I don't know if Clermont people have noticed the dead, there are nine acres of dead trees to the right of. The access building is sitting in swamp water that wasn't there before. Along, and it's right, right along four ninety-five. That's a serious concern and. And it is a buffer to the neighborhood as far as a buffer from four ninety-five, the pollutants and the sound and all of that. So that has affected our neighborhood and the water streams have also been affected. I have just learned that there's some flooding that didn't exist before that now exists over in Bert Hill Road area. Across the lake and there is flooding taking place all around in Rosina's properties and, and believe me, I've noticed. And that brings me to the three streams. There were three streams that were on record in eighteen fifty in a, a drainage map that was created or commissioned by the state. They're there then and they're there now. So when the town or when Clermont says, well, the wetlands, they're intermittent. They're, they're on every map I've looked at. I have US, USGS surveys, geological survey. Maps that show the streams and the mass wildlife. Agency calls this a, a key or core aquatic. Area. In other words, as does our town have Article twenty-one that includes the wellheads. On Clermont properties as part of the zone to aquifer and it's a protection district, district. That was approved in two thousand twenty, two thousand eleven, if you would like to look that up. Also. As far as findings of facts and conditions. So speaking about the stone chamber and PAL, I have reached out to PAL and their information is not public. So I can't get that, the, and I'm not saying that. We're being misled about the stone chamber, but my research with all the stone, stone chambers from. In New England to around the, the country and the world. Little is known about them and even the experts don't agree about the origins of those stone chambers. And it's, it's pretty significant that it's been there for, you know, for as long as it has, but we just don't know. But we do know that PAL was there for another company. Some years ago, and that's the report I'm chasing down. I don't have the date. You know, I'll look that up. Pavement. There's so much pavement. Those roads are so wide and it's all asphalt. I was gonna measure it, but I just haven't had time. So in that regard. I'm glad to hear you're bringing in some solar energy and you're getting a little bit green with, with your development because. To date, you haven't listened to us. There is no, no creativity or acknowledgement for green buildings. So. Like all these things matter, but the biggest thing that we're concerned right now is Lake Nip, Connecticut. And how that stream is an integral part of the three streams, they're still flowing. I have proof of them flowing over the years as I've walked the neighborhood. I always take pictures. That's what I do. So I just want an acknowledgement of. What's being done to provide buffers, particularly for the stream that comes right out into. The park and ride, under the park and ride, through a culvert feeds into a lake. Those culverts are blocked, by the way, so that could help. And, but there's two pipes that come into Lake Nip, Connecticut. One feeds and one doesn't. So I'd like some feedback on that. That's crucial to the welfare of the lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. Do we have anybody else? Shane, Mr. Walsh, it looks like.
Yes, we have Mr. James Walsh. James, you're good to go.
Yep, apologies. I didn't see the, the request to unmute. James Walsh, sixty Crescent Street. I'd like to echo a lot of the, the comments that have already been said, as, as well as some of those that have been written in. Namely, you know, again, this is not the same town as it was in nineteen eighty-eight. It's not the same climate as it was in nineteen eighty-eight. So. There's a lot of things that have changed that need to be, you know, really reconsidered for that. As well, you know, I, I think. A few folks have brought up that we're not seeing the whole context. You know, I, I believe the petitioner here has brought the, the assisted living facility as a separate, you know, kind of item. They're now bringing this hotel as a separate item. There is an existing plan, you know, there is an existing site plan of what they, they want to put. In this entire site. It's extremely dense and it's, it's currently, you know, with the state. The state EPA denied the plan the first time it was submitted. It's currently under, you know, a re-review. But it seems a little bit premature to go ahead and start approving these little pieces piecemeal. You know, before that entire plan is, is, is approved by the state. I know that last time the, you know, the. When this was brought to the town council, it was the, the assisted living facility, when it was brought to the town council was tabled. They said, you know, this isn't, this isn't the time. And I think that should really set the precedent here as well, that, you know, until that entire site plan is approved, we shouldn't be looking at things piecemeal. Finally, you know, I, I know the, the chamber has been brought up and in some, some, you know, writings in from the, the Narragansett tribe. They have claimed, you know, that that was a, a Native American chamber. Even if it weren't, you know, it's, it's over two hundred years old. It's the only chamber. Of that type in the town. It's, it's clearly historically significant. As was noted by the, you know, the historic district committee as well as the historic commission. There's a lot of significance at that site that also needs to be understood. But I think in summary, you know, this, this feels very premature at the moment to go ahead and approve this. And definitely needs some, some kind of reconsideration and, and making sure that we're appreciating both our historical assets and, you know, the overall environment of the site. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Shane, I think Mrs. Nary had her hand up, but not a virtue, but not a virtual hand.
Oh, she's got both their hands up. All right, Pat, you're good to go. Thanks, James.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Pat Nary, Lakeside Drive. Excuse me. We have zoning regulations that protect the health, safety and welfare of our residents. With orderly development of our town while making provisions for land uses. In the best interest of its citizens while minimizing potential negative impacts upon each other. This language was excerpted from a presentation of one of our counselors, Counselor Moore, given earlier this year. And it's just a reminder that we have to follow our zoning regulations and that's what our planning board does. So additionally, our planned development district was written with protections of the neighboring area. The area that I live in and many enjoy. The actual language addresses use, site access, internal circulation, parking, traffic. A multitude of restrictions on this land. Especially being in that it's an area of critical environmental concern. And it's also called the Lake Nip Wellhead Aquifer Protection. I don't even know how we can develop on a property like that. That is our random zone to water supply. So there are also some infringements on our wetland setbacks in the site plan. But those may be of more concern to our concom. But we, we do want to remind everyone of the sensitive nature of this area. This parcel is part of the larger Lake Shore Center project. And I'm not sure if there is a supplemental DEIR that a few people have mentioned prior to me. So Mr. Love it said there were comments being made, but I'm not sure if there is going to be an actual supplemental DEIR. The PDD zoning requires development to not affect the town's natural resources. It is a known fact that we have water and sewer issues. And this additional hotel will impact the rest of our town if it is allowed. We also know that current demand by the Marriott Hotel. The access and Viva apartments on our police and fire departments. Require constant visits over there. Those resources are tremendous. Those resources are tremendously impacted. I've been told that the calls to those facilities are more than to the rest of our entire town. We don't need more of that. Anyway, Mr. Lovett did mention that the hotel motel will not exceed the percentage. So that that was a question I had and is apparently now answered. Our PDD also stipulates that no building be within two hundred feet of Route one oh four. The site plan appears to be short on that setback requirement. If they are using Old Pleasant Street or Route one oh four as the frontage, they're short on both. The PDD also states that internal circulation system provides for flexible vehicular circulation connecting all points within the park without use of roads outside the development. I'm not sure how that works, but where there's not going to be a use on Old Pleasant Street now. Maybe that would comply, but again, I'm not sure. That has, it's supposed to have the internal circulation. And we have a difference of opinion as far as the the stone chamber is valued. And I know that PAL said it was not significant, but it is significant. It's an ancient tomb. And our historic district committee, as well as our historic commission, are in the process of getting it designated as a standalone historic district. It's just probably not going to be right away. So hopefully they'll get that done in time to interrupt the damage to it. The noise level over here is supposed to be considered by our planning board everywhere. And it's already increased tremendously. And this is impacting the surrounding neighborhood quality of life. When they clear those trees, it's going to be devastating. And as Mrs. Morrissey mentioned, there's going to be tons of pavement, but we'll have to talk to Concom about that. It should have a certain porous porous product used, not not asphalt. Anyway, please do not allow this project to go forward in its present size and configuration. We have regulations in place to prohibit unsatisfactory, incompatible development that impacts this area. We need to stop destroying our natural world for profit. There's nothing in this proposal that will benefit our community. The only benefit is Claremont's bottom line. And I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Neri. I think we have Shane, Melissa up next.
Yep, we have Melissa with her hand up.
Hi, good evening. Melissa Raymond data Lakeside Drive. Thanks for hearing my comments tonight. You know, you've heard many Bridgewater residents and taxpayers this evening provide important reasons as to why this high impact, high density project does not adhere to the zoning principles of the town and does not belong in the location where it's being proposed. Remember, there's five hundred and eighty residences up there, folks. Approximately. I would like to share some additional insights with the planning board as you review all information to make your decision. In terms of impacts on neighborhoods and towns' natural resources, let's talk about the perennial stream on the northeast part of the site that flows from the wetlands on the site to Lake Nipponiket, the headwaters watershed of the Town River. A primary tributary to the federally designated Wild and Scenic Taunton River. A perennial stream, as shown as such on the USGS topographical map, as well as many historic maps, is afforded a two hundred foot buffer zone. However, this stream on these plans is not consistently marked on all of the site plan documents. You can take a look yourself and it's microscopic. It's not easy to see. And it's not shown with a two hundred foot buffer. And just to reiterate this, it's hydrologically, all of this is hydrologically connected to the lake. I'd also like to talk about map eighty-three Lot eighty-five. When you look at the site plan as it's shown, you see the hotel. And then you see for the rest of Lot eighty-five, a big, you know, acres of of trees that that go up against Lake Shore Drive. What's the plan for that lot? We all know that all those of us that have seen the MIPA, the 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 MIPA proceed proceedings, that there is a hundred and sixty unit four-story condo building proposed for that site. Now, when you're making this decision, how are you supposed to make a decision about a site when you only have half the information? So I I'd like to know why this isn't part of the plan. Perhaps Claremont could clarify that this evening. You know, the drainage and the grading site plans indicate that the applicant may already be engineering the drainage for that second structure. Is that the case? I'd like to know. How would a second structure on the slot impact the drainage as well as overall zoning zoning criteria such as open space, floor space, et cetera? Shouldn't a second structure be part of this application on Lot eighty-five if one is planned? Again, it's a piecemeal approach to a planned development district. And also like to like to talk about the maintenance of the drainage systems. Have we done any studies in terms of reviewing the quality of the maintenance of the existing drainage systems on this site? Because if they're not working, then there could be significant runoff that's not necessarily being measured or 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 noticed. So I think that this is something in terms of maintenance and measuring maintenance and seeing, you know, seeing if if the drainage systems as they are are functioning at the highest possible level. Also would like to recommend a site walk for the western side of access to just determine the cause of the five acres of dead trees. All you have to do is drive down four ninety-five by the site and you'll see them. With regard to the PAL letter, which is named the MHC letter, the MHC I noticed was not on the letter. It indicates that there's a stone chamber that was not considered to be a potentially significant cult, significant cultural resource by the MHC in nineteen eighty-four. And no further archaeological investigation was recommended. The applicant should then explain why in two thousand eighteen in the memorandum of agreement between Claremont Lakeside Bridgewater LLC and the MHC, it is stated that whereas the undertaking within lots six and seven includes two significant archaeological sites included in the MHC's inventory of historic and archaeological assets of the Commonwealth. The Tomb roadside site nineteen PL four nine eight and the Bassett site nineteen PL four nine seven that in the opinion of MHC meet the criteria of eligibility for listing in the Natural Register of Historic Places. Claremont decided that the preservation of the area was not prudent or feasible for a conservation easement. However, the area should be afforded protection and recognition due to its significant to significance to the Wachusett, Narragansett and Wapinaw, in addition to its historical value. There are documents that support this and I'm happy to provide them. I'd also like to ask with regard to the water usage on the site plan of a hundred and ten gallons per day. Does this include the laundry? Does this include the restaurant? And there's also a function room, a number of other things. Does that include those facilities as well in terms of the water usage? I think it should be noted that there's potential clear cutting of five acres of trees. And just that the proposed construction does not serve the balance of land use with its destruction of acres of forested land and archaeological site and the potential impacts to Lake Nipponiket, its surrounding streams, rivers and wetlands, as well as the additional strain on Bridgewater's overall infrastructure. Remember the density. The hotel project will have adverse effects on surrounding neighborhoods and towns' national, natural resources. The special permit should not be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Roman Data.
We have Anthony Olivera.
Mr. Olivera. Good evening. My name is Anthony Olivera. I'm thirty-five Birch Hill Road. And I want to greet the chair at the planning board and the residents of the town of Bridgewater. Thank you for allowing me to comment. I want to reiterate again what Ms. Neri did share about the police and fire activity that has increased dramatically in the last few years because of the addition of the of the large complexes that have been built on on the property. It's public knowledge, you know, you can look at these calls yourself. I mean, we're talking larceny, domestic disputes, et cetera, et cetera. Assaults. These are things that are happening, brought into a neighborhood that was a neighborhood of quiet enjoyment of the lake and the surrounding nature around us. And I wanted to ask the the board if whether or not they've considered consulting with the police chief Del Monte and the fire department as well regarding the stress on the the town and the amount of calls that are actually made. There is not the one week where there isn't an emergency call made there with the lights and sounds. The volume is tremendous. It echoes across. If anyone has ever been on the one side of the lake and you shout to someone on the other side, they're going to hear you clear, clear as day. So this has become a huge problem. The other thing that I wanted to point out or ask for consideration is the town in itself is looking at a vision for the downtown. We're looking at revitalizing our downtown. Wouldn't this project be better suited for the downtown area where you could be utilized for other of that for folks who are coming in for events in our city, in our town in the university, at the university or wherever and leave this area to rest for a while as it is at this point overloaded. I respectfully ask the the board to not consider this project and I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
Thank you. All right, we have Carlton up.
Dr. Hunt.
Hi, Carl Nutt, eighty Austin Street. I'm speaking to you from an energy perspective. I chair the energy committee here in Bridgewater. I respect the decisions that have to be made. They're not going to be easy. We've heard a lot of comments. One of the things, if this is a positive decision, I'd like to have the site plan address and encourage maybe require additional energy conservation measures on this building. The current stretch code that was just passed in the last three or four months, it stiffens the requirements for energy conservations. My expectation is, is the architectural plan for this building, should it go forward, will encompass all of the stretch code requirements. And I'm going to make a request that the developers actually look at the code. It's an international code. Its initials are PFIUS. There is one building in town that followed that PIFUS guidance. Their hers rating, a good rating is forty-five. The lower the better. Their hers rating is twenty-two. I think it would be advantageous to the town from an energy conservation perspective that this development, if it goes forward, will in fact respect that codes and deal from that perspective. Solar is a given. We need more alternative energy. This is a building with a large roof. It goes forward, it should be solarized completely. That should have been the warehouse that was previously put on this property. I'm going to comment on the Massachusetts. He is Poconoit. His heritage was written up by a descendant and is published. The important tribe who is not recognized, but who's engaged is the Metakisa tribe. The Metakisa tribe claims the territory of Bridgewater as their historical lands. And the last point that I will make is basically I would like the planning board to seriously consider mitigation, just like you did with the warehouse that was built on the property. Loss of these trees are is important, and I think there may be other mitigations. I am quite concerned about the water use. And I think that sewage treatment plant, and even though they're below the hundred thousand number, I think significant funding should be contributed to the town, especially in terms of sewage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Pat, we have Eileen Heine with her hand raised.
Mrs. Heine, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Heine. I live at three one six South Street. And I want to make comments on behalf of the Open Space Committee, which of which I am the chair. Our committee submitted comments to you on June fifth, although I think some of you may have just gotten them recently. And they were put together by Nicole Holmes, who I think many of you know from other activities she's engaged in in the town. She is a an engineer with a lot of experience in site development, particularly environmentally sensitive and green infrastructure. And I hope you'll pay a special attention to the comments that Nicole has made in that letter that is submitted on behalf of the Open Space Committee. A couple of things that she noted from her review of the 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 plan was that it would result in about five acres of clear cutting of contiguous forests. And of course, as we all know, that's adjacent to highly sensitive ecological and hydrological resources. This whole discussion brings up the fact that Bridgewater, on one hand, is trying to do a lot of really good things. We're trying to protect trees. We have a new tree committee. We just got our Arbor Day Foundation accreditation started up again after many years. So we do these things on one hand, and then on the other hand, we we clear acreage willy-nilly without looking for the kind of mitigation that's probably possible in this in the circumstances as well as many others. The the sprawling impermeable footprint that this project, especially if built out, as we all expect, it's going, it's going to be proposed, makes no attempt to prevent clear cutting, to maintain vegetation and habitat corridors, nor preserve sensitive buffers to water resources. And it does not promote the use of any low-impact development techniques. That's another area where Bridgewater is trying to be at the forefront of of a new new planning ventures and and using really twenty-first century planning designs to make our communities more livable and more environmentally sensitive. I'm sorry to say that this project seems to be out of nineteen eighty-eight, which is when I guess the whole thing was was started. There's really no incorporation of the kind of twenty-first century impervious service services being eliminated, tree tree clearing being eliminated that you would expect from a more forward-thinking developer, especially in a town that's trying to be forward-thinking and in an area that is of such critical environmental concern. The the traditional approach to stormwater management doesn't acknowledge the sensitive hydrology and ecology of the surrounding area, nor utilize current best practices for resilient stormwater management. And that's another area where I think that we have to wonder, what what is the point of the area of critical environmental concern? If if the area of critical environmental concern designation does not require something above the norm, what was the point of that exercise? The this was something that was initiated by Bridgewater and approved by the state and it 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 suggests that there should be higher standards held for development in this area. But I don't see that that's being, that that certainly the developer has not proposed that. They seem to be proposing just state of the not state of the art, but you know, state of the art for fifty years ago or maybe even twenty years ago. But not incorporating the the environmental issues that we see all over now with flooding and 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 heat and it it just seems like it's it's something that should be out of the past. Unfortunately, it's not. It's just business as usual. And what I also want to echo one of the the comments about solar, I mean, the the I believe it was just this evening that the comment was made that the building, that they have responded concerns. They're making the building solar ready. Solar ready doesn't do anything for us unless it's actually solar use. What is the point of that? I mean, you know, if they're making it solar ready, well, then let's let's get the solar in there and get the benefits of it now. We know we need them now. We can't wait another generation. So it was the the Open Space Committee respectfully request that this not, this permit, the special permit not go forward. Thank you for considering our comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Heine.
All right, we have Sam Baumgarten.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, good. Sam Baumgarten, sixty Short Street, the other side of town. First, I agree with an earlier comment that no project should go forward without the final MIPA report. An approval now would subvert the entire MIPA process. Second, just as I have recently praised the town of Bridgewater for being a leader. In becoming a welcoming community, a leader in in the social justice realm, I believe we should be a leader in the environmental protection realm. The daily news makes it clear that our world is burning up right before our eyes. In my own neighborhood, I have watched acres and acres of trees lost for large, spread out housing developments, and yes, more pavement. This hotel will remove more trees, add pavement, and be just another chink in the safety of our environment. Every little bit makes a difference. While Mr. Rui correctly pointed out that we must abide by our regulations. We must be very strict and allow no variances. Bridgewater should be a leader and refuse to allow another hit to the environment unless every question is satisfactorily answered. Finally, for me, the word mitigation is a red flag. Mitigation means that a problem is being created. Let's not create more problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you. All right, we have Fred Chase.
Mr. Chase.
Uh, thank you very much. I'll be very brief. I've heard comments this evening with respect to the. The need to await the issuance of the supplemental environmental report. I know that about the end of January, the draft environmental impact report was. Submitted to the Commonwealth and at that time was actually rejected. And the the Commonwealth said at the time pursuant to MIPA regulations. I hereby determine that the draft environmental impact report submitted on this project does not adequately and properly comply. With the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. And with its implementing regulations and therefore requires the filing of a supplemental. D E I R, Road Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. I believe that. The applicant. Has not discarded the initial. Plan calling for what was termed phase phase four of the development. And that, as we know, is a multifaceted, high density proposal. And we have seen in the past. Efforts to bring forward individual pieces of that. So called phase four project in the form of a proposed restaurant on the nip itself. Of a proposed. Assisted living facility. And now a proposed hotel. So again, all of the efforts appear to be aimed at isolating. Individualized segments of what is still the overall. Plan, the overall phase for development. And I think that. Awaiting the supplemental environmental impact study is essential. In order for us to have a comprehensive view of the total impact that will be. That will be felt by the the area of critical environmental concern. Those are my comments. I am, by the way, I I I'm remiss. I should have pointed out at the very. Beginning of my comments, I am a member of the Bridgewater Town Council. Nonetheless, the comments I make to you this evening are those. My personal opinions. And they're not necessarily reflective of the opinions of any members of the Bridgewater Town Council and certainly not of the. Town Council overall. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. At this point, do we have any other public comments?
Uh, I don't see any in the chat, nor do I see any hands raised.
All right, so based on the public comments, do we have any other questions or comments for the? The team, the development team at this point? I just just to follow up on a couple of things. Mrs. Ramandada stated that there was an agreement for these two sites in Claremont. And that she had documentation in regards to that. Does the town have that? Have we reviewed that documentation? Or do we know anything about that at this point?
Are we regarding regarding the MHC document?
I believe Mrs. Ramandada stated an agreement between Claremont and M H C S.
I do not have that one. I only have the letter from. That was provided to us from PAL.
Okay, and then another comment that came up, please, in fact, just in terms of thinking about. You know, mitigation and ways to minimize impacts on this project. Do we have a? Or can we request a? Public safety demand report for that site up there or is do we have we looked at that?
Yeah, as as the board can request.
Just just to weigh that against the fiscal impact, you know, if if they're stating, you know, it's going to bring in, I think it when I read the documents around four hundred fifty thousand in taxes. You know, what is it going to be for additional police and fire calls and things of that nature if they really are that? Out of whack up there compared to the rest of the town or are they right in line? I think that'd be important to see.
Brian said, Mr. Just we can request that, I mean, as a rule of thumb. The economic benefit, you can divide that by two in terms of what the costs are. In terms of additional public safety. But we can validate that, but it's not a zero sum game by any means. So legitimate question.
All right, and then the MIPA filing, that's been brought up a few times in in this. In this public comment forum. What's the town's position, Mr. Rui or Mr. Brian on the MIPA report and waiting for that to flush out? Is that necessary? Or should we should we not?
There are aspects of our site plan review that do take into consideration of environmental impact, however. Just based on the timing of state processes, we typically, especially in the cases of DOT permits, we we especially. Condition a lot of decisions based on. The receipt of other approvals by parties that are beyond the entity of the planning board. You know, we've done this in several situations where. If there is issues with a conservation approval or zoning approval, that's out of the purview of the. The planning board because we can't really base our decision making on state entities, but we can consider. Information presented before us on particular environmental impacts such as tree clearing. As part of the site plan review based on our zoning ordinance.
And one other comment that I'd just like to address is a number of people mentioned five acres of clear cutting. Has that changed in this new submittal that we received today? In regards to the clearing and the landscape plan, or is that clearing still five acres?
Let the applicant answer that, Shane.
Sure.
The on civil plan that was submitted. The entirety of the lot is. Is graded off and on the. The landscape plan that was submitted, there was a limited work of the. Proposed landscaping plan. So just to be crystal clear, the. Creating plan for the civil plan and now the landscape plan, which is on the proposal and on the civil plan. Are consistent. We didn't want to leave any or avoidance of any type of doubt.
So what what is the total? Just so we're clear now, because I know five acres was thrown around. What is the total clearing at this point?
Would say that the it's approximately five acres is correct. Mary, would you be, I think that. The disturbed area. Larry Silver, would you be able to articulate that? Approximately.
And why are you looking that up? I'll just, I know Mr. Rui had. I stated they thought that was important of that second egress onto that parking lot, but. You know, I just I look at it as it's going to be an enforcement issue, and that's that's the issue I have with how we're going to monitor that. If it's open, are we going to set up police? We're going to set up Mr. Slary all the time. And I just note that it might be nicer to have that screened as opposed to a second, a second egress. If you look at Viva that's tucked away in the back. There's three hundred apartments back there, much higher density in terms of population. There's only one egress or access out of that site, so. You know, if it's not necessary, I'd rather see it, you know, screened and and.
I don't I don't disagree with Mr. Just, I mean, I just think that. I'm going to defer to public safety. Experts as to whether it's appropriate or not. I mean, if it can be screened and go away, I'm I'm fine with that, but. In my experience, typically, two means of ingress and egress for emergency services is. Typically. Required and when you look at how they've reconfigured the site and they're coming in from Lake Shore, there was a car blocking. Emergency vehicle trying to get into the back of the site if there was a fire. That could be a problem, but I mean, again, I'll defer to the fire department on that. You know, and if they're fine with not having it, it can be screened. I'm okay with that, too.
Did Mr. Silva come up with that calculation yet, based on today's submittal?
I don't hear that now. I'm looking at the again ballpark. The entirety of the property. It seems like it could be. Yeah, it's about five acres.
Bill, there is site data on page one cover sheet of the plan, upper left hand corner breaks down. Uplands, wetlands, building area and pavement. It's it's helpful on that point.
That is, but I think I looked at those numbers or Ed, and I think that those speak to. I don't think that answers the full question because that doesn't encompass.
Correct. If I'm, if I may, I figured out how to unmute myself.
Sure, perfect.
You got six and a half acres.
Good, thank you.
That would be Rebecca.
Yes.
All right, at this point, do we have any other board questions or comments?
Sorry. I'm happy to touch on some of the questions that were raised if if the board is. Open to that. Perhaps provide some clarity.
Sure, go ahead.
So. And I took the best notes that I could, so I apologize if I miss anything. One of the items that came up was with regard, and I think MIPA came up on the number, okay. So the. MIPA application was filed. It was turned back to. That's not uncommon. It's quite often that you'll make a submission. People will have comments, you'll address those comments. As I mentioned previously, we actually had a call with MIPA today in preparation for our resubmission. In order to answer their application, which will be in the next thirty to forty five days, they'll review that again. And then the, you know, hopefully they'll be issuing a panel. Now. One of the. Items that we've been talking about with MIPA, and it was raised in this discussion as well is. We do not, and and the question with regard to the the balance of lot seven came up and what's going to be there, we do not know at this point in time. We have no plans to put on those there, the they're not permitted. The but MIPA is asking on one level for us to provide them with a full build out. But we really don't know what the full build out is going to be. So we're removing a number of buildings from the plans. Now, on for traffic, MIPA wants to see, or actually DOT wants to see the traffic, assuming we build out a more intensive use. And so it's a. My point is it it's going back and forth, and we're working closely with MIPA. But we can't. Put items on a plan for a full build out because, you know, it's taken twenty plus years to get us where we are today. And it's it's going to take many more years to build out the property. So that said, we can't give an honest representation of what's going to be in each one of these different locations. We we just don't have that information. We don't know what the market's going to be. So I appreciate the comments and and we are working very closely with MIPA. And so MIPA is taking into account the entire build out on the from a traffic standpoint, you know, they're obviously concerned about environmental. As 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 we're seeing, so. Again, I that may not be the answer that the group wants to hear, but we don't have today, tonight, we have before us. Hundred and ten building hotel, which we are prepared to execute upon. MIPA is taking into account other development, potential development over time. And this will continue to evolve, as was mentioned, the the entire project, you know, the hundred and seventy plus acres. You know, wasn't all going to be developed overnight, right? Unless it had been the mall, but that so there is language in there that allows for the project to evolve and and we appreciate that. The with regard to the traffic study, there was a comment, I think Gene made right out of the gate. We did there, the expectation on traffic in and out of the hotel is about forty eight. Fifty three, forty eight out in the morning, fifty three out in the evening, I think. Plus or minus. Again, we were doing that traffic report for this specific project. MIPA has requested and we're looking at traffic improvements for the entirety of the project. At a build out that may or may not actually. Again, I know that the streams were mentioned a number of times and appreciate that with regard to changing conditions. Again, I point us to the MIPA process as well as we the Conservation Commission. So I'm sure any concerns will be flushed out with that. We did work very hard to move and make sure we were not in the twenty five foot zone and and project. Even further away from that. I know it, again, it's the the process in nineteen eighty eight. And the project in nineteen eighty eight is different, again, with the MIPA and conservation, like the process is in place to direct this project. Are all have also changed and evolved, you know, much different than they would have been in nineteen eighty. And again, we will be in front of. We are two hundred feet off of Route one oh four, just for clarity on that point that was made. And we do comply with the internal circulation. That was one of the components of staff's position of moving. And accessing from Lake Shore, so we do comply with that component. Again, we're not certain what's going to be on the next lot. We talked about MIPA. You know, looking at and drainage and the over the entirety of the property. Police and fire have commented on the project. They were their opinions were solicited and we did. Get responses from them. I will point out anecdotally that with regard to the the difference between the residents in. And they proposed Hilton Garden Inn, residents in does have kitchens. So fire, I think the demand on fire is a little stronger kitchens than it would be in a. I ought to call it Hilton Garden Inn, which is more of a just a bedroom typical. In talking to staff, that was one of the points that was made. When I say staff, I mean, fireman staff at the the hotel because we were diligencing that concern. We, I think we've talked a lot about the letter. We have worked closely with. With the tribe of Wampanoag Mashpee, as well as with the. You know, and had had the tribes out on site. We we do have the letter as mentioned before from PAL when the extensive investigation was done. And. I don't know if there's too much more to talk to with that point. We said we did commit to putting the solar preparation on the roof. We are doing solar on other projects. We. On the timing of MIPA, again, you know, the MIPA is not MIPA is not an approval. We need the, so it shouldn't affect this approval relative to timing. Uh, we need the, so it shouldn't affect this approval, um, relative to timing. And. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Mister, um, Tandy. Do we have a second technical review from you on this project? I have all the other ones for all the other projects, but have you done a second?
No, Mister Chairman, I did not get a chance to review this project just because of my schedule.
So you haven't, you haven't reviewed the project at all, or or a second technical review?
The second technical.
Right, because we, I I I have the initial, but I haven't seen a. I know those were just your initial comments, and then we needed a second technical review in regards to stormwater and. And whatnot, has, is that in progress, or where are we with that?
Yes, it's in progress, but. I just did not get a chance to um, complete that review for tonight's meeting. So I still have to do um. A more review of the stormwater and other aspects of the uh, project.
Or a few comments. Um, you know, with respect to traffic, I would suggest that. You know, traffic is significantly less than it would have been uh, pre-COVID with the office building. Uh, you know, they're not a hundred percent occupied there, and more traffic is generated from the office buildings than than the hotel. Um, with respect to future development, uh, at that location. I just want everyone to understand that. That's not a singular decision that a council can make in terms of adopting. An amendment to the zoning ordinance. The original plan was approved as a special permit by the planning board. So anything that relates to the nineteen eighty-eight permit. The town council can't circumvent that. That has to come back to you all for your approval and. With respect to vision to reality, what we're doing. There's no one more concerned with infrastructure capacity in this town than me right now. And so I am monitoring that, and I'm very concerned about that, and I want to make sure we're vigilant about that. So. I think many of the comments that. Most of the, all the comments we heard tonight are all valid, but you know, there are checks and balances in place. From the town to make sure that things are proceeding accordingly. But again, we have to keep in mind that they are operating under a special permit that they received in nineteen eighty-eight. That's not carte blanche to do whatever they want to do, um, but. They do have some rights, but we need to, you know, make sure that the community is protected as well. And I just want you to know that. Town staff is monitoring this and we're aware of this, and we have shared these concerns with the applicants.
All right, so just so we can get to other applicants this evening, is there anything else from the the board or from the public at this point?
I have a couple of comments, Mister Chairman. First, I I I want to thank people that spoke. I think the developers should. Take them all into account because they were obviously well thought out. I'm, I, somebody mentioned a sidewalk, and I was thinking about that myself, and I think it might be a good idea. For this board to um, do a sidewalk before the next time. We meet. Um, also, I would like. A written response from various boards that have input into this development before the next meeting as to how they. What they um, think about the project, in particular, water and sewer. Uh, I know police and fire have mentioned, but I think we do, we do need um. Comments from various boards, in in particular, uh, Mister Tansy. Mister Lovett mentioned the. Full buildout, that. Bothered me to a degree because. If nineteen, nineteen eighty-eight. If this was approved as a. One development, are we, are we doing these, this piecemeal? And if we're doing a piecemeal, then we're not doing it the proper way. Now, I just question whether that should be cleared up. By somebody, whether it be town councilor or not, before this this proceeds. And the bottom line is, I still have a lot of questions about this, and I I would prefer that. That when we uh, put this off to another meeting, that we put off to a point where we can get. Everything together before we make any decision, including MIPA. I think MIPA, the MIPA report is important. Thank you.
All right, anybody else before we entertain a motion to either continue or?
I concur with Ray. I like to do a site book property myself, too.
So we can, we can take that up in in a motion, so we can, we can address that. Thank you, Mister McDonald. Anybody else at this point?
I got one comment on the, on the stone chamber, because we, we seem to hear a lot about it. I mean, has there been any consideration of. Keeping it and designing around it as a, as a historical part of a. Use of property. I'm not quite sure where it exactly lands on the property, but. Would there be any way to design around it and and plaque it off like a nice historic thing? People that might want, that might want to just see it and keep it.
There has not been consideration at this point. For that, based on our understanding of that.
All right, so, so I, I, I think, you know, first of all, we. We need a second technical review from, from Mister Tansy before we can move forward. You know, the other thing from town staff is I know that. That um. The, the number of police and fire calls has come up a couple of times, and I just. I'd like to see, you know, just helping me make my decision. In terms of, you know, is mitigation needed? Is it not needed for 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 public safety? I'd like to see, you know, the um. The police and fire calls to the, the planned development district and all the properties on it. Um, maybe over the last six months or twelve months, if they could provide us that data. Um, Mister Jimmy, and we did receive, um, I don't know what else we can get from Water and Sewer. We did receive an email from them. Um, and there is also an agreement in place from nineteen eighty-eight, so I think, I think we'll have to look. You know, based on the two conflicting um. Documents, we will have to try to work that out with Mister Rully, but but I think Water and Sewer did comment either today, yesterday.
I may, Mister Chairman, I know, I I know, I saw those two uh. Emails, but I just, they were just sort of general. I was wondering whether. Either if they appear or they may even give us a little more detail about what they're, support what they're saying, it would be helpful.
All right, great. So, and then um. You know, I would, I don't know if Miss, um, Mrs. Ramandada was willing to, or if we could locate those documents she was referencing, because I don't. Know whether they're valid or not, that that. And I'd like to have the town look at those and see if it's something we should be concerned with or not be concerned with. Um, in regards to the site and some agreement that was made, so um. Maybe, you know, we could reach out to Mrs. Ramandada and get what she has, or or figure out where she got them and and get a copy of them ourselves to. To ver- verify whether they're valid or not.
I would say Mister Chair, rather than reach out, I would say if Mister Ramandada or Lake Shore have any information that they be provided. Uh, via email as a public comment or correspondence um, on behalf of the applicant.
You know, I think it'll just help us make our decision in terms of, you know, conditions and and things of that nature, so. All right, is there anything else at this point, or anything else that members of the board would like to say?
Mister Driscoll, I I would suggest the site walk.
Yeah, I, I agree. We we can certainly do that. So, well, we'll, we'll, maybe we'll take a motion to either continue or. Or do whatever we decide to do and then take them, uh, set up a site, a site visit, or. We could set that up right now, Mister O'Brien. I don't know when we're going to continue this, too, so I was trying to coordinate it closest to the meeting.
Our next three meetings, but based on feedback that we've had from previous meetings, we don't want it on the August second meeting because. Edgewood, Edgewood Development will be at that meeting. So we will be looking at either the August sixteenth or the September sixth meeting. Um, I think possibly the August sixteenth meeting may be doable. Um, and then in between then, we can schedule a. A sidewalk on preferably not humid day in between now and sometime in August.
Now, Mister Jimmy and and um, was it Mister McDonald? What, what do you anticipate for a sidewalk, just the site? Um, the planned development district, you know, in general, the area that was brought up in terms of the trees, what, what is the scope of the sidewalk that they'd like to?
Oh, I, in in my mind, I like to obviously the site itself and and also any of the. The uh, environmental areas that are of concern, whether the streams or whatever in in the area, so not, not the whole. District, but just the the area of where the hotel is going to go in.
And these either historic or nonhistoric structures? Okay, so assuming we would go out to the sixteenth, Mister O'Brien, do you have a date that would work well?
Uh, for a sidewalk?
For a sidewalk.
I would have to schedule it with uh, you board members and see whose availability it would be.
We, we don't have to set that now. We can set it, you know, you could do a poll later and then we could post it, correct?
That is correct. If if we're going to have a, a group or quorum of the board attend a sidewalk, we'll have to post it.
Okay.
One, one comment, Mister Chairman, is the sixteenth. Too close? Are we going to be able to get everything? That we want in terms of data from various boards in by that time?
It's a month away. It's a month away.
I, I, I think from it to Mister Jamie's question, I mean, from the town's perspective, we can address. Your concerns, but I think the larger question is, you know, what the developer or the applicant can provide you with respect to MIPA. And some other documentation. I mean. Very little of this is coming from the town. I mean, us getting. A data in terms of police and fire, that's easy. But I think it's more incumbent on the, the applicant to tell us what they're able to do.
About conservation?
Conservation, I, I've, I advise the applicant that I think at this point. Uh, where we are with the planning board, it's premature for them to go before conservation at this point, because. We don't have a complete understanding of what all the issues are. And I don't want to ping pong back and forth between conservation planning, so. Um, I've suggested to them previously that. Until we are at a satisfactory position with the planning board, it's premature to go before the Conservation Commission.
Mister Jimmy, I think maybe we should just, that's a month away if they, I, I think we should try to keep it on track to some degree. It's.
I, I understand that. My, my only concern is, it seems to me that. Based on what people have said and what we're, what we're talking about right now. The overriding issue here is the environment, and that's got to be addressed before. I think at least myself, that we have to have some feedback in terms of where we are in terms of the environment before we. Or at least I, I agree to this. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I'd really like to see everything come in.
I think we should, I think we should wait for NIPA report.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't. I don't, I don't want to bring anybody. Before conservation until we have all the information that Ray is asking for and others are asking for, because. I mean, I don't think conservation is in position to then make any kind of decision. They're going to ask the same questions.
Well, again, my, my concern though is if, I I'm not sure what you're referring to, Bob, in terms of approval or. Or not, before going to conservation. I realize conservation is separate from this board, but all I'm saying is because of the environmental issues. That I would feel more comfortable of hearing what conservation says and what MIPA says prior to my okaying this, that's all.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree, right? And that, that's exactly what I'm saying is that. Until we have, you know, many of the things that you're asking questions for, I think. Conservation needs to hear that information as well.
That's fine, that's fine, as long as there's no um. Decision, then no, no feeling that on the sixteenth that we're going to approve at that time, that's all.
I, I don't think you're in a position to make a decision on the sixteenth.
Okay, I'm fine then, that's fine.
All right, so anticipating setting up a sidewalk, I mean, maybe we could coordinate that with, with Mister um, Lovett. Uh, the, you know, through the office. Mister Lovett, did you start to say something? I don't want to cut you off.
No, if I may, um, just so I'm as clear as I can be on this. The. Could the board clarify the expectation on the MIPA? What is being requested with regard to MIPA?
Mister Really and Mister O'Brien, what?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take that. So I mean, as, as you said, Mister Lovett, for. MIPA only comes into consideration for state permits, but you know, not. Notwithstanding that, you know, we have. Residents and concerned people with respect to the environmental, so it's much cleaner for us. To move this process forward, to be able to check as many boxes as we can going forward. Um, you know, we, we heard about the fact that, you know, there's a perennial stream on the site that's not depicted. Necessarily on the site plan. I think we need to flush all that out. And staff will make ourselves available to work with you and your group with respect to that, but. Prior to bringing this back to the planning board, or bringing this to conservation. And understanding where the NIPA process is, there's a lot of unchecked boxes right now, and. I, I, I just think we have a fiduciary responsibility. To the residents and the community to check as many boxes as we can, and. We're not. Anywhere barrier for you checking those boxes, but it's incumbent on you to get us the information that we need so we can check those boxes.
So just from a, I'm trying, I mean, the MIPA documents are public documents, so I think there's a lot of information in there and available already. I don't know, um.
I mean, I, I think the site, the site visit is important. Um, the, the, you know, the perennial stream is not necessarily depicted on the site plan. You know, there's, you know, landscape plan came into us at the last minute, I mean. In your best interest, circle back with staff. We'll communicate with, with, with the planning board, but. Just trying to set reasonable expectations, you know, the sixteenth of August might be just to see where we're at. You know, where are you in terms of MIPA and their review? Where are we in terms of additional information that we asked for? Um, and there should be no expectation that there's going to be a final decision made on August sixteenth.
In addition to Bob's comments, too, uh, the board has purview in terms of just looking at. Any disturbances of environmental areas based on the recodification of this new zoning ordinance under performance standards for larger projects. Um, but yeah, we want to kind of keep the board's focus um, from a staff standpoint, um, and I do include this as part of my staff report as well. Um, looking at essentially checkboxes for performance standards for larger projects as well as site plan, design, approved criteria. So, um, just seeing that some of the questions that we've asked for um, today, and were mentioned today. And addressing, and maybe the applicant comes in and addresses maybe line by line on how their project uh, is applicable to. Um, the guidelines of our zoning ordinance as well. I think that'll be beneficial for the board in uh, for the August meeting.
Yeah, and if I can just finally make one last comment, I just want to make it clear my, my stance on this, and that is. Uh, as you all have looked at the nine, nine point four planned development district, it states. The purpose of this section is to allow the town to regulate development of planned industrial parks and designate suitable areas. So as to achieve significant revenue or employment benefits without adverse impacts on the neighbors or. On towns' natural resources. So. That's all I'm saying. That's how I'm going by, and uh. I'd like to see more data to back up the idea that this hotel will fit there, that's all.
All right, so we have. Mister Lovett, you, would you like to say something else? I don't, before I ask the board for a motion, I, did you start to say something? No, sorry. So if we're targeting the sixteenth to continue this, too, just to keep it on track. Uh, we may not be ready to, to close the meeting at that point, but if that's the will of the board. And there are no more comments, um, would somebody please make a motion to? Continue this to that date?
To the uh, August sixteenth meeting at six thirty.
So Mister McDonald spoke first, Mister Jimmy, and would that be a second?
That's a second.
Some motion by Mister McDonald, second by Mister Jimmy. And um, after we continue it, we'll. We'll ask staff to uh, send out a poll in terms of setting up a sidewalk. And getting permission from Clermont and um. Uh, whatnot to, to set up a sidewalk before the sixteenth, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mister McDonald, the second by Mister Jimmy, and to continue this to. August sixteenth, at six thirty P M?
Correct.
I'll take the role, uh, Mister Jimmy.
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Miss Rojas? Ms. Rojas? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas? I mean, yes, so it would be, um, four in favor, one abstain, I guess. Well, four in favor, zero against, is that how we want to do it, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, I don't. You, you can do that.
Yes, that's correct, I apologize, Astrid is not in the meeting anymore.
Yeah, I can't find it, so, so four to zero, I, I just couldn't find her, I apologize. Okay, and then, uh, Mr. O'Brien, you'll coordinate with the board through a doodle poll or something and, and Mr. Love it in regards to a sidewalk, correct?
That is correct.
And just for all members of the public that are on this, on this hearing tonight, um, there will be no additional notification for this project. And it is continued to August sixteenth at six thirty PM.
Uh, Mr. Driscoll, I just want to add that we will have to post the site visit. As if there's going to be a quorum, so members of the public will have an opportunity to participate in the sidewalk.
Correct. And you can email town staff, um, if you'd like to find out when that sidewalk is, I imagine, is that correct, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Good night.
All right, so I will, um, Mr. O'Brien, could you? I know you sent it to me and I'll grab it, do you have the, um?
Yeah, I can, um.
The public, the public hearing notice.
I do, let me pull it up.
While you do that, I'll open the public hearing, so, so item three, uh, on the agenda this evening. We have, uh, new public hearings, the first new public hearing we have is thirty-one Perkins Street, map twenty-one, lot one forty-one. This is a proposed self-storage facility for Storage Cap Bridgewater LP. This is a site plan review, uh, approval section to ten point six, a site plan approval. Yeah, this ad was posted in the, um. I believe it was the, the.
Rocket Enterprise, yeah.
Rocket Enterprise, uh, the ad says thirty-one Perkins Street, legal notice, public hearing, Bridgewater Planning Board. On Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM, the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducting a public hearing via Zoom on an application by Storage Cap Bridgewater LP. For a site plan review approval pursuant to section ten point six, site plan approval. On a property located at thirty-one Perkins Street, map twenty-one, lots fourteen, the property is zoned for industrial B and central business district. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing building and build a new self-storage facility. The application and plans were prepared by JDE Civil. And are on file in the Community Economic Development Office at sixty-six Central Square, Bridgewater, Mass, zero two three two four. And there's a website, a website provided to view those plans, and this was. Um, submitted on behalf of the Bridgewater Planning Board and, uh, was posted on, it was published on seven five and seven twelve, twenty twenty-three. So, uh, we also did receive an email, or I did receive an email from Mr. O'Brien. With the, uh, green card of other notifications and, um. At this point, if the applicant is here, I will again open it up to the applicant. I stated this before at the last public hearing, um, we'll ask the applicant to, to present their, uh, project. We'll have the, the town boards and staff interact with the, um, the, the project proponents. And then I'll open it up to public comment, and again, public comment, just state your name and address before making a comment. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the proponents for the, uh, storage facility and, um.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, my name's Dan Bailey, I am a land use lawyer at the Boston firm of Pierce Atwood. And we represent store space, also known as storage cap, uh, with respect to this project. Um, I'm going to introduce the project very briefly and then turn it over to Sabrina Pernalent, who is the project manager at. Store space to give you a little bit of a perspective on store space and their project and, and what the, um. You know, the corporation is all about, and then we'll go to Greg Driscoll at JDE Civil, who is a civil engineer to this, to this project to talk about. You know, sort of typical site plan, site plan issues, um. You know, as the notice says, we are seeking site plan approval for a reconstruction or, or it's a new building at thirty-one Perkins Street, there's an existing. Uh, very old shoe storage or shoe manufacturing building on the site. Uh, our proposal is to tear that building down and then to build a new with an entirely new building. Um, you know, we'll get into some of the, the details of that, uh, in a little bit. Uh, the, we've already been to the zoning board of appeals and have been granted a special permit. Uh, approving the removal of the existing building and the reconstruction of a new building as a, uh. Uh, alteration of a previously, uh, non-conforming structure. It conforms with respect to use, uh, but there are some dimensional limitations that are non-conforming. Uh, we're improving on those dimensional limitations, but we're not fully compliant with current dimensional limitations. You know, Greg, if you could, you know, um, Greg Driscoll at JD Civil has a, uh, presentation that we'd like to share with you. If Greg, you could put that up, and then I will turn it over to Sabrina. Uh, to talk in a little bit more detail about store space, who they are and what their program is for the site. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody, thank you, uh, so much for taking the time of, uh, reviewing, uh, the project that is going to be located in thirty-one Perkins Street. Rich Water, Massachusetts, um. Next, please. Store space is a basically, um, I'm sorry, Greg, can you go next? Thank you, store space is a self-storage operator and third-party manager, um, let's say, company. Our specialty is doing self-storage development across the whole country. We have, uh, had the opportunity of developing within twenty states now. And it goes anywhere from climate-controlled self-storage facilities to drive-up units to multi-stories and so on and so forth. Next. Uh, basically, all the proposed sign on this property is going to consist of a four-story building of around a hundred thousand gross square feet. In where we're going to be operating Monday to Friday, I'm sorry, Monday to Sunday from nine thirty AM until five PM. With access hours from six thirty AM until ten PM. Uh, the proposed use of this facility is going to be a fully climate-controlled self-storage facility. Uh, without any type of hazardous material, and where we're going to also be proposing. Uh, security systems and any type of access control to make sure that this, uh, facility is operated in a very safe. Deep way to, to the tenants. Next. So on this, uh, uh, aerial view, we can take a look at existing property, which is a four-story, uh, four-story, uh, building. It's semi-climate controlled, one, the first and second floor right now is operating as a self-storage location, but the third and fourth floor is currently vacated. Next. This is, uh, the view of the property from Perkins Street, you can take a look at the chimney. That is located in the back section of the building as well as all this siding that is located on this back portion, which we can talk about that later. You know, as, as we go down further and the reason why we decided to take the whole building down and do a new reconstruction. Next. Next. Hello? Greg? Hello?
Greg, I think your screen's frozen, oh, there it goes. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh. Back in February of twenty-second of last year, we obtained a site plan approval for the renovation of existing four-story building and an addition. On the back section, um, I'm sorry, Greg, can you please go back one more? Hello?
Yep, uh, they're coming through.
Yes, thank you, so way back in February the twenty-second of last year, we obtained an approval to renovate. The existing four-story building, excuse me, give me one second. And it was going to consist of, uh, seven thousand four hundred gross square feet, uh, climate-controlled self-storage building in the rear side of the. Of the property, next please. Moving forward, as we started doing this whole business development, we realized that actually the best way to move forward with the project was going to be proposing a new construction. Of a footprint of twenty-four thousand. Three hundred thirty-six for a total area of ninety-seven thousand three hundred forty-four. Uh, with seven parking spots, and this is because self-storage is a low, uh, traffic generator. And with that being said, uh, we are right now in the process of the site plan approval. Um, and actually, we started the process of the site plan approval to be able to move forward with the construction, um, as soon as possible. Um, this project unfortunately is not new for a lot of you, we've been working on this for a long time. And right now, we're finally getting to the point and we, we have come so far just to make sure that we can develop it. Uh, with that being said, I would like to, you know, direct directly to, uh, Greg, so he can give further explanation and everything that has to do with the site plan.
And can I just jump in here and can you go back to the last slide before Greg jumps in? Um, I, I just want to point out. This slide, and I'm sure Greg will get into it in more detail, but what this slide is showing is the existing conditions. Um, and then the proposed conditions, the existing conditions are in red, that's the existing building. And the proposed conditions are in the kind of yellow-ish color, um. And, you know, this is what we brought to the zoning board of appeals and obtained a special permit for. An alteration of a pre-existing un-conforming structure. Uh, the other thing that I want to point out, and I'm sure, you know, Greg and others with more technical ability will get into this. Uh, but this, one of the reasons when. Store space really started grinding the numbers on this and looking at reconstruction as opposed to a new building. Is that the cost of reconstruction makes no sense. Uh, given the amount of asbestos that's in this building, it is, you know, very significant. Uh, we, there are some pictures and we can show them to you, but the, um, there is asbestos inside the building, but the. Entire building is covered with asbestos shingles. All of that's going to have to be remediated in accordance with Massachusetts DEP standards. And so after really putting pencil to it and evaluating it and. Thinking about it, it just made a lot more sense to do a new building. Rather than try to reconstruct the existing building, and with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Greg, thanks.
All right, Greg Driscoll from JD Civil here, presenting for, representing store space and storage cap. Bridgewater LP, um, so. Right into here, proposed plan sets, um, this is the existing additions plan, um, prepared by Conoco. Shows the system rail, commuter rail line along here, there's an existing swell on their property, um. Street drainage appears to. Outlet into the swell and then goes up to this concrete headball. Here, um. Is it, this is the building outline from, that was shown on the last slide that I had up there, and. Perkins Street is a one-way road going this direction. Um, Pearl Street is, um, that's traffic in two directions, this is another, um, business use right over here. Uh, and these are business uses over here as well, so. This is the proposed demolition and summer erosion control plans. So, nicely showing that we're removing the building, we have stockpile and. Construction entrance areas shown here as well as, um, erosion and sedimentation controls. It's the proposed site layout. Um, so Perkins Street is one way in this direction, so we are having a one-way. Into the site, and so we get to the parking area by the office. We have proposed dumpster shown here, this is the loading zone, there'll be doors right here for tenants to get in. With, I believe, key card access, Sabrina, um, to get in and out of the building. Parking along here for the office, which will be located in this area, building. Um, trunks. Most transformer. Uh, we are adding, and this entire site is paved right now, it's purely impervious, so. We have increasing green space by just in this landscape area through here, it's curving. Over here as well, and. Back to the existing nation plan real quick, just to show that. There are existing encroachments over the property line of this building. From one point one feet there. Or one point two feet there, so this, um. Those projects will bring them. Probably more into compliance and put her on our property, uh, we've also, as Dan mentioned, we have. Uh, zoning special permit for the setbacks that we've, we're showing on the plan here. Um, there's existing, um. Easements through here on our property. And back in here, this is the AUL area that, um, Shane had mentioned. Which means that's an area of exclusion, we can't disturb or work in.
And just a side note, Greg, as well, I did provide the planning board, um, reference to that easement, uh, the access easement. Um, as well as I did find the plan from as recent, I think it was a twenty twenty-one plan that showed, uh, the easement location as reference, as you referenced. Um, at the registry, so that was provided to the board, just to let you know.
Yep, that's a reference right here, thank you, appreciate that. And, you know, that easement goes all the way up to the street here. Um, so we're keeping our building outside of the access easement, obviously, because we can. Compete on that. As a benefit to the, uh. Property owner over here. Moving along, uh, so this is the grading and drainage plan. So, just by removing a purpose area on the site, we're already improving the drainage, um, situation out there, giving a little bit of, um, recharge. Um, the main, and as this is a great development site, we only need to, um. Adhere to the storm management handbook to the extent practical for standard seven. And the local bylaw, um, for eighty percent CSS removal and fifty percent, um, phosphorus removal, which we have. Achieved and documented in the drainage report, uh, so we're collecting water and treating it through deep some sort of catch basins. And down into here to a contact. Jellyfish, um, filter treatment unit. Before it discharges out to the street system, because that's where all of our off goes right now into the street. Um, we are, um, some of the roof trains, which does existing roof transit head out to the, um, MBTA right away currently, so. We're maintaining that, we will need to get licenses from MBTA for demolition to begin with, and then. After we get the local approvals, we can then apply for the, um, MBTA construction licenses for the new construction. And we are in receipt of comments from Mr. Tanzi, um. With regards to, you know, the entire site, but in particular to drainage, he was looking for us to. Connect into a new manhole over in the street rather than catch basin, so that's one thing that we'll. Address as well as the other comments. This is the landscaping lighting plan, so. One of Shane's comments was that this sidewalk here should continue, and we will do that, we'll advise that on the plans. I think Shane also threw that out to the board as far as, uh, planting. If the board has a side with that or would like to see more. But currently, there's nothing on the side, so anything's an improvement. And then we have our standard details, so. That's the overview. Dan, is there anything else that I should touch on? Or they like to add?
No, I, I, I think that's good, you know, we have to bring it back to the board for, for their questions and comments as well as public questions and comments. I, you know, just to, you know, kind of wrap it up. You know, we are reducing the amount of impervious surface on the site. Increasing the amount of green space, yes, it's a old, you know, non-conforming structure and use, well, the use is conforming, but the structure is not conforming. But you know, I think we've tried very hard to bring it up to modern standards. Certainly with respect to the expectations on landscaping and there was a comment from Shane on that to improve it a little bit and we're happy to do that. You know, the access is much enhanced. The, you know, new building i- is going to be constructed to modern standards and, you know, as we heard from the, you know, the prior hearing, the, the town has adopted the stretch code, so of course we'll have to comply with the stretch code. You know, the storm water is going to, storm water management system is going to be much improved. And so in summary, you know, you've, I think, have a proposal for a, you know, substantially improved stored, modern storage building at the site that will comply with, you know, the town's current standards. And, you know, we're happy to listen and consider any additional comments from the board and from the public.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Driscoll, just a couple of quick questions. When this came before us as a, as a rehab prior, I, for some reason, I thought I recalled there being some contamination either under the building and near the building that you know, was just going to be capped. You know, because the building was there, is, is that true? Is there any contamination? And if there is, will this removal of the building allow you to further address that? Or is, has the, the contamination been addressed? I know, I thought the contamination was somewhere in the area of like the, the smoke stack or, or somewhere over the, in that area, if I recall.
Yep, that's the, this area right here marks as A U L area, so activity.
All right, all right.
Limitation, I believe, that's, I got that right, Dan?
Yeah. So is that, is that all addressed or is that something that'll be addressed as part of the site plan? Or is that something that could be further addressed because we're basically redoing the whole site?
My understanding, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong here, is that it is to be left alone and not touched? And that it is dressed in that, in that capacity there.
Yeah, I, I can jump in on that. There's an existing A U L, what's known as an activity and use limitation, which means that the level of contamination at the site is acceptable for commercial purposes, but would not be acceptable if you were to propose a residential purpose. The, the way that the state environmental regulations work is they've got different levels of acceptable contamination depending on what the proposed uses are. And in this particular area, you've got, then I, I'd have to go back and look at what the contaminants are. But there are contaminants in that area that is shown on the plan right there. And that there is an activity news limitation. And what it says is that this area can only be used for commercial purposes. And if the owner should ever decide to dig or otherwise do work in this area, it would have to be done pursuant to a health and safety plan approved by an environmental consultant duly licensed by the Department of Environmental Protection. This is a very typical condition on commercial properties. You know, the whole idea being that it makes no economic sense to clean a commercial property up to a residential standard if you're going to only use it for commercial standards and you're going to cap it and, you know, preserve it and, you know, basically prevent anybody from having access to that. You, you have to be careful about choosing the words here because people feel about it differently, but moderately contaminated area. The state does have standards called upper concentration limits, which if, you know, you have petroleum or soil contamination above upper concentration limits, you have to take it out no matter what. We don't have that here. We have standards that are in compliance with commercial requirements. So our proposal is, we wouldn't do anything with that. Because it is in compliance and has been submitted to D E P and as a permanent solution and is in full compliance with D E P requirements.
Great, thank you. So the, the town engineer provided a technical review today. And then just, I want to touch on a few of these and you have the, the full letter, I'm sure. One of them, one of them is in regards to the abutting property and the, the access to the Demco garage bay, so, and, and we just want to make sure that, that the building being that close to the the front lot line and now occupying that corner closest to Demco doesn't restrict their access. And that it, I think he wanted us to demonstrate that the, the access to that loading bay would not be restricted and create a hardship. Is that something that you could perform for us, or show us on the plan?
So this right here is the, the loading dock. And our proposed building is within an inch or two of, of the existing building. So this corner right here, it's, we're going right back where it was. There is an access easement that I mentioned through here and here that we're expecting and not putting the building on top of. So the, the same accesses.
So, so I, I saw that earlier and then I saw the comment. I guess my other comment is line of sight. So if, if somebody's pulling out from behind there and now that building is that much closer to the street, you know, from, from a line of sight, from a line of sight perspective, from safety pulling out onto that street, from backing into that, that loading bay and getting fire apparatus around that because it doesn't have that corner to swing in anymore. Is that, you know, can you, can you adequately fit fire apparatus? Can they adequately access what they're, what the intent of that easement was to allow them to access? And is that a safe? Is that a safe egress onto the street, the way that is if a vehicle's coming out of there with that corner now blocked? You're only a foot and a half from the street, I think, right?
Two point two on that side, but um, this is a one-way, so site distance in its direction isn't going to change.
All right, all right.
And then Dan, as far as the, what the easement says for access, we're fulfilling that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're in compliance with the access, but you know, I, you know, I hear the comment about site distance. You know, we can provide turning templates that show, you know, the ability to get, you know, emergency vehicles in and out of there. Would, I'm not concerned about that at all. You know, the issue that has been raised by the butter is access to that concrete loading dock right there at the, at the front. And I've had discussions with Mr. Demilia about that. You know, we've looked at it certainly and, you know, the existing situation allows for access to a box truck there. You know, my client purchased this property from the butter and part of that purchase was the negotiation of the easement that is now in place, which is, you know, basically the, you know, it doesn't show the easement area, but it's that area between the, yeah, exactly, between the abutting property and then going all the way to the back to provide access. You know, where it says, you know, map plot, that's all easement area and we've respected that easement in all respects. So, you know, we think, you know, I'm, I'm, we don't even think, I'm totally confident that we're in compliance with the easement terms. You know, if there's something else that is relatively easy to do to try to you know, make, make things work for everyone, we, we'd be willing to consider it, you know.
Yeah, just, I just asked you to consider that and then if, if you can demonstrate that trucks and fire apparatus can, can safely get in there and out of there, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, we, we can get you the turning templates, you know, the, you know, typical type of information that.
And if you can, if you can work it out or work something out with the butter, I think that'd be helpful as well, so.
What, what is the width of that easement? Is it twenty feet?
Ten feet to twenty.
What is it, Greg? Do you know?
It varies because it's along here and then there's this whole back area.
Yeah, but the, the area from the street.
Yeah, Jason to.
I don't, I could.
I mean, you know, I mean, you know what, you know what.
We'll, we'll get it to you, yeah. I, I, I think it's close to twenty, but we'll get that to you.
All right.
This is twelve feet here, it's probably ten feet on, on this. Rubber here.
If, if, if it could be looked at and if there's something you can do to address it, that'd be helpful. Signage on the building. I know there's a number of letters on the building calling out what, what it is, is that? And maybe Mr. Solari can answer this, is that in compliance, the number of signs they have on the building and the letters with signed by law and I, I guess that's something we could look in, into, but assuming they are in compliance with our signed by, by law, I think the last time we approved the, the, the signs on the building, they were going to be backlit as, as to almost provide a shadow and to comply with the doc, the Doc Sky regulations. Is that something that's being proposed that could be proposed on this building? Instead of, instead of internally lit, instead of internally lit letters? I think we try, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, yes, that's definitely something that we can work on to comply with the requirements.
And I, I think the last time we, the way we worked it out with you folks, what it was, and Mr. Geller is better with the architectural elements. It, it was almost like a solid letter with a, with a light behind it, which created almost a shadow like a backlit light as opposed to an internally lit light, which, which looked more industrial, so to speak. And I know it's an industrial area, but we're, we're trying to, you know, refurbish the central business district and make it look as inviting as possible. And it's, and it is going to, but you know, hopefully some, some mixed use properties at some point, so.
Yes, absolutely, and this is a reason, one of the reasons also that we didn't go just to a full ground up. It was also improvements on the exterior finishes. It's because we're looking forward to have some sort of aesthetic that matches better. The communities that we're going to be serving with the self-storage side. So you're going to see implementation on different materials such as metal, some green walls on the exterior. And we would really like to try to match as much as possible with the aesthetics of the community. So just let us know the guidelines and we'll do our best to comply as much as we can with the store space prototype.
Great, and then I have two other quick comments. The, the last time, and you, and you just hit on it, the last time that you came before us, just to try to get it to blend with downtown, you, you guys graciously agreed to have a color palette that was, you know, historic colors or in, in keeping with like the Benjamin Moore historic colors. It, it appears that this building is pretty close to that with the grays and the reds and, and things of that nature. So are these, are these the actual colors that will be on the building that you're showing or will they, will they be different?
This is intent of the colors of the building that we will be showing. However, if you wanted to send me the palette, approve of Benjamin Moore, we'll be more than happy to take a look at it.
And I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying we want that, I mean, I think, and I, I don't have the decision before. We had, it was grays and reds and things like that, we just didn't want like bright oranges and things like that. So I just wanted to know if, if this is the, if these colors that are actually proposed are, are actually what you're going to use on this, on this site.
Yes, these are the colors that we're intending to use and, and regardless, if there is any type of modification, something that comes in the future, it would have to, we would like your blessing before moving forward with any type of modifications.
And the last one, and I'll stop talking. So the last time we approved this again, and I know it's an industrial site and I know Parkin Street is, is a blend of a few residential houses and some industrial and then it potentially could be mixed use. But where that, that grass strip is along Parkin Street, I think you folks agreed to do some street trees before in that area as Mr. O'Brien had indicated, just to try to enhance the streetscape a little bit. I know you're, you're improving on it, but if we could have some street trees in that area that comply with our street tree list, I think that would be, that would be helpful as well.
Thank you for, for the feedback, we'll definitely take that in consideration.
Great. All right, any other comments from the board at this point?
Let's see if we can hear you.
Mr. Geller, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
So on the, on the, on the last session, we had, there was a discussion of motion sensor lights in the back part of the building against the train tracks. I am not a real big fan of motion sensor lights because they don't always work. So I'm hoping that we could keep some lighting down as the dark skies, but I would like to see it, you know, not motion censored.
We can definitely accommodate that, that's not an issue.
Other board members at this point? And you folks have received the technical review that came out from our town engineer, Mr. Tanzi today, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we didn't see anything in there that couldn't accommodate.
The circle background, Steve Solari, for the signage, it's a separate sign permit, right? That's applied for?
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, is the sign permit approval part of a condition of approval for the site plan? Or is that something that can come along with a building permit?
I would, I would say that as long as the sign complies, the board just kind of looks at what is going to be on the building. But if, if a sign doesn't comply, then obviously it would be noted as part of any sign permit process. And from there, you'd either need to request, I guess, a variance or you would just comply with what our sign regulations are, which is what typically people do.
That's a separate permit from the permit, right? Applied with your office, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other board comments at this point? If not, do we have any public comments at this point? Members of the public that would like to speak on this project?
We have a hand raised from Carlton.
Hi, thank you guys very much.
No, we, we, we know who you are, but could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Carlton Hunt, eighty Austin Street. As I said in the previous hearing, I am Chair of the Energy Committee and quite concerned this climate control will require quite a bit of electricity. So while we don't, we do have a solar bylaw that includes solarization of buildings, it's not a mandate. But I think it would be who, from an energy perspective, climate change perspective, to actually put a solar system on top of, of the building, it's got a quarter of an acre, that's, that's a pretty decent amount of size. The color scheme, I agree, it needs to be New England historic palette. The red, the red colors and stuff that I'd seen previously were pretty bitch and eyesore for the downtown that area, especially if we're trying to redevelop it, we want to have a better, more New Englandy color scheme, so that's one comment. And the other thing is, there is a chance, and I appreciate that you've recognized that we follow the stretch code because we're in Massachusetts, we're a green community that requires us to follow the stretch code as it gets updated. But there is a chance that we're working on is that the town council would be asked to by the end of this year to adopt what's called a special code. If the town council adopts that special code, I'm not sure if it would, it, it won't be grandfathered in, but that would require commercial developments to impact solarize the roots of buildings. So I'm just going to ask as an energy person that you seriously consider building the building such that you can solarize it, not just solar ready, but actually put solar panels on top. And is the other question that wasn't clear to me, is that A U L area, is the chimney coming down? Is it, how do you integrate that if it stays up into this whole design? Thank you.
Thank you, Carlton. All right, we have a team. All right, we have a Tina Larson with her hand raised.
Hi, I'm Tina Larson, Amherst Avenue, I, um, moved to New England from the Midwest and I would love to see things look like New England. This storage building could be anywhere in the US. So I would love to see that new hotel, if it goes through, look more New Englandy, more historic, take advantage of the fact that it is. Native land previously. Um, the Perkins building is New Englandy, they should try to make it look as close to what it used to look like. Otherwise, we could be anywhere, you know, New England unique, let's keep it unique.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Larson.
I don't see any other virtual hands raised nor any comments in the chat, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Driscoll, that was a good question by, uh, Dr. Hunt, is the the chimney is being raised, correct?
Yes.
Right. All right, great. Um, any other public comment or board comments at this point? Staff comments at this point, Mr. Tansy? I know we get your first technical review today, have those issues been addressed yet or are you going to work with the applicant on those?
Yeah, I I suspect that, uh, Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Driscoll will, um. Uh, great, great, um. We'll contact, yeah, and, uh. You know, probably contact me, we can go over the the letter and, um, the things that I observed in the in the field. Um, I would. Prefer to see granite curving, um, used out there opposed to, um. Just because. The granite, it's it's more aesthetic, but it holds up so much better and there's not. A a whole lot of curbing out there. Um, you know, I I think a project this size. Could easily accommodate that, um. You you know, and the other thing is, um. They do have drainage structures going into the right of way of the, um. Uh, of the railroad, but I didn't see any. Easements in there, um, if the applicant could speak to that, I I would appreciate it.
Yeah, that will be covered with the, um, MBTA construction license that we'll have to get.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I can speak to that in even more detail, um. You know, the existing building approaches, uh, into the MBTA right of way, which. I've been doing this for thirty-five years and I haven't had that happen yet. Um, so we will. Definitely be removing the building from the MBTA right of way. Um, we will be applying for two different approvals from the MBTA, the first is for a demo approval, this is an active line. And so the MBTA will be very interested in it. Uh, the first will be a license to do the demo and the second will be because the building is. You know, it butts an MBTA right of way, we have to communicate with them, you know, about the reconstruction. So, uh, those are all things that we will deal with. The MBTA, um, on, we do have a a right, you know, we have an easement. There, um, but that'll all get worked out with the MBTA.
All right, thank you. Any other board comments at this point? Staff comments at this point, Mr. Tansy, you you were starting to say. About the granite, is there anything else you want to add?
Other than what you. I I think everything else is in in the letter that I wrote, if there's any questions that are. Uh, the applicant has or a board member has, I I would be happy to entertain that. But I think we've hit on. The the more important sections of of my report.
And I, just to recap, I think, you know, the increased landscaping, the the colors matter down there, historic palette. Uh, the the lighting of the signs, the additional trees, et cetera, so. Um, just keep those in mind when you're making your adjustments.
Yeah, our our intent here is. You know, no question to substantially improve the existing conditions from. You know, all possible perspectives, stormwater, landscaping, access, you know, reduction in impervious surface and, uh. We'll continue to work on those.
All right, so if there's no more board comments, no more public comments, um. This, there doesn't seem to be a lot to work out over the next couple of weeks, is there something that we'd feel comfortable moving to the August second meeting? Mr. Dr. Hunt, I see you raise, raise, raise your hand.
Since this building is, while it's not in the historic register, it is. One of the most historic buildings in Bridgewater. Uh, McCann Shoes had it, we use, I, when I moved into town, it was the Walkover Shoe Factory, McCall Wayne's built it. He actually developed one of the, uh. Shoe assembly line processes, comfortable shoe for everybody. Is there any? Does the owners right now, do they plan to provide some historic write-up? That would possibly be, um, on this area or something like that. I I just a question, uh, because the history hasn't been written up as far as I know, and I think it should be respected, thank you.
Well, I can, I can answer that comment quickly, um, the the property has been inventoried on the mass historic. Area, um, as you stated, the Walkover Shoe Company, but it it has been inventoried and is within the, um. Uh, it's been inventoried in the district of the Bridgewater Industrial and Transportation Corridor. Just to quickly answer.
You're right, I remember that now, thank you.
No problem.
I mean, if what you're asking for is that there could be some sort of. Written acknowledgement in the lobby of the new building about the history of the building, sure, that's not a problem.
I think that's what I'm asking for, I'm part of the Community Preservation Committee also, but I just think. We need, that's a pretty iconic building, although it. Doesn't look so good, uh, but it does carry a lot of history and I think it's respectful of of the McCall Wayne family, et cetera. To have that in there, thank you very much for considering it.
Yeah, I I recognize the comment, I, um, I'm a Weymouth. You know, traditionally Weymouth resident and there were a lot of, uh, shoe factories there and. You know, some of the reconstruction of those shoe factories has been exactly what you suggested, which is. You know, at least put something in the in the lobbies that recognizes the history and, you know, that's that's a. Not a hard thing to do when. I have to talk to my client about it, I'm sticking my neck out here, but I think that's something we could probably accommodate.
Yes, and and if you don't mind, Mr. Dan, I I would like to, I'll jump on this one real quick. Every time the storage space develops a facility, we try to give that, uh, let's say personalization in every location we go. So it's very common to find maps or skylines of the cities that we are developing in. So we'll be more than happy to have a wall dedicated to any type of mural or artwork that reflects the history that has been on this land because land. They do have a story to tell, so we'll be more than happy to consider that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
All right, so we have, um. Some comments that we've given to the the applicant and they have the technical review by. By Mr. Tansy, is this something that you think we could move to the August second meeting just to keep this moving, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, if if, uh, I think if the applicant can address some of these minor changes, I I don't see. Any issue that the August second meeting wouldn't be, um, feasible to get these.
What what works for the for the applicant, we have August second or August sixteenth?
I think August second works, I think we can get these changes made and get them into, you know, Shane his team.
All right. If that's the case, do we have a, and there's no other, uh. If the, no other comments? Um, if there are. State them now, if not, we can have a motion to continue this to August second.
I'll make a motion to continue it to August second.
Second that.
I'll second it.
So we had Mr. Geller and then we, did I hear Mr. McDonald second it before Mr. Ajemi? That's true, Mr. McDonald. Motion, motion by Mr. Geller, second by Mr. McDonald. Any discussion on the motion to continue this to August second at six thirty PM? I'll take the roll, uh, Ms. Rojas.
Yes, and and just to apologize, I just want to apologize for losing connection earlier, but my vote is yes.
Mr. Ajemi?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll see you on August second.
Thank you.
So everyone, how good night?
Good night.
Mr. O'Brien, just while I'm reading this, could you pull up the second, um. Public hearing notice, please?
Sure thing.
All right, so again, under item three, public hearings new, we have three eighty-five North Street, this is a new subdivision called Old Stables Estates. Map thirty-two, lot nine. To propose three lot subdivision, definitive subdivision pursuant to the planning board subdivision rules and regulations. Do you have that? We did receive the, uh, green cards, you did provide me a copy of those, Mr. O'Brien. Sure did, we did publish an advertisement in the enterprise. On seven five and seven twelve. Uh, it stated, uh, on Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM, the Bridgewater Planning Board will conduct a public hearing via Zoom. On an application by Tech Built Corporation for approval of a three lot subdivision propos- proposed on three point five nine acres. Located at three eighty-five North Street, Bridgewater, assesses map thirty-two, lot nine. The plans are prepared by Silver Engineering and are on file with the town clerk and the CED office and website. All interested persons are encouraged to attend. Uh, the Bridgewater Planning Board, and just for those of you joining now, uh, the way we handle the the virtual. Public hearing is that we'll ask the applicant. Uh, or their representatives to present the the plans. Will then ask staff and, um. Board members to ask questions and then we will turn it over to the public for any public comment. And if you are a member of the public and making a comment, just please state your name and address before making a comment. I will now turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, uh. Lawrence Silva from Silver Engineering Associates. And I also have Rebecca Baptista is also with me this evening. So Old Stable Estates is a, a, a three lot subdivision. Uh, on a site that originally had a single family home with a, uh, excess land. Uh, it up, it up butts the, um, it's north of, um. It's north of Willis Road and it's right adjacent to the. Uh, back entrance to the high school. Uh, which you can see there on that plan. Um. The the house and the other structure bond have have since been removed. And, um. Yeah, what's being proposed here, like I say, is a three lot subdivision under your. Your rules and regulations for, uh, under four lot, one to four lots. If you go to the next one, it's, uh. The the name we're proposing is Fontana Way, um. It's, um, as you can see, the three house lots are good sized house lots, acre in size. Um, and, uh. The only deviation that we have from. From the standards for design for, uh, this type of roadway. Is that we, uh, basically have it instead of it being crowned in the middle of the. The road, we have it so that it's, um, a a south to north. Slope across the, uh, the roadway. Um, that's primarily because of the shallow groundwater conditions and the, um. Uh, and and the existing topography. Which make it, uh, much, um, might much better and more feasible. To take the drainage over to one side. And then take it to the back. Of the, uh, second lot. Uh, where there's a a a detention area that is. Uh, shown along that stretch. Um, aside from that, it's a, um. It's a hammerhead, uh. Design. Uh, as required in the, uh, regulations. And we're proposing to be serviced by water and sewer. Uh, for the project itself. I know you guys have had a long night, so I'm trying to keep a presentation short and. Then answer whatever questions that you might have.
So Larry, you you kind of answered my my first question. Um, where where is the catch base, do you show a catch base on it, at elevation like one, one oh two, but I don't see it on on the plan?
Or where do you see catch basin?
Well, any detail, any detail sheet, and I don't have it in front of me, when I looked at the detail sheet earlier. Because how how is all the water getting to that system, is there a catch, there's a catch basin? Showing in the detail and it shows elevation one oh two?
There's a, there's a, is an inlet, there's an inlet with a catch basin rim right here.
I think he's talking about off the street.
So, so the, so the, I I was just, and Larry kind of answered the question, so in our typical forty foot layout. We have the. The roadside swells on either side of the street, right?
Yes, that's the one that you show in your standard, yeah.
So is there a roadside swell proposed on the, on the, is that the north side of the street? Where the road tilts?
Yeah, this whole side will capture. And and swale it this way towards this holding area.
How 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 is the first hundred and fifty feet getting into that system if it's going uphill?
Uh, there's a high point right here and the first part of the road will will shoot off of the, um. Off of the road through this swell. And mimic existing conditions.
So 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 the swell on the front will catch that water?
Yes.
That's the, that's the way water, uh, currently flows in that direction.
So it would, and I'm just, I'm just looking at this from like, uh, just trying to preserve as many trees as possible and try to mimic and try to minimize the. That that's a pretty big area, clearing and and and.
Have a lot of trees, this was where the existing home area was, so.
But you couldn't, you couldn't achieve what you're trying to achieve just by having a roadside swell on the whole. Side of the road where Fontana Way is, you you couldn't achieve it that there?
No, the shallow groundwater doesn't let us do, um, the separation that you would normally see.
All right.
We don't, it's it's shallow.
All right.
So I had, I had it out.
All right, that's, you know, so that was, that was my first question, just why, why we weren't doing it that way?
And and the, yeah, and the, uh, actual, uh, the tree clearing. Is actually that it's not as bad as you think on this one. As you can see where the existing tree lines are. In the, in the gray and the proposed tree lines in the in the green. So we have pushed back in some areas, but not not crazy amounts.
Yeah, this is the existing home area, so it was already kind of sparse.
Yeah, that was already pretty clear.
So we're preserving as much as we can in the back. In the back of the houses, the house lot.
Well, just, it just seemed like the drainage system you were building was a lot larger. Than it needed to be, you know, the, I, you know, the intent of these was to kind of keep it just all within the layout, so you didn't have these big. These big drainage areas, so I didn't, I I, you answered the question with the groundwater, but I, my, my question was why? Why didn't you just have a roadside swell on that side of the road with with Fontana Way? And you're saying it's because you can't achieve the the separation, correct?
Yeah, we'd have to raise the road like two feet and then the whole site would have to go up from there, so it didn't seem practical.
All right, no, all right, um. The tree cutting and landscape plan, are you going to submit one or or there's no planting shown on this for street trees or tree cutting or landscape plan, is that? Something that we can expect a limited clearing and and things of that nature?
Unless the board is, entertain a waiver. Have we entertained waivers for three lot subdivisions for landscaping?
I'm not sure, we typically at least require the street trees.
Okay.
If that, if that's what you've required, then we will add the street trees.
Yeah, I guess in regards to tree clearing pad, I I think that they they do a a substantial job preserving the existing trees, even just based on this plan.
All right, so if we, if we don't, if we don't think we need it, we don't need it, but I just, I think that. We've held all the other applicants to to the, to the, uh, the the tree planting standards of the town, so.
No, I'm just, I'm just stating in terms of if. You know, I think the this potential for, uh, you know, you could do a tree easement along, uh, the the roadway of the high school, but. In terms of the properties themselves, eh, once private property owners. Take control, you you don't really know, especially with the no proximity to wetlands there. Uh, I I don't expect that tree clearing area to be maintained for the, you know.
All right, no, it's fine, I just, but we have required the street trees, you know, at the, at the intervals that that are necessary.
Sure, and as part of my staff report too, I did, I did note if there was any information about, uh, streetlights as well, um. Uh, I know that we typically, eh, we can. Allow for lanterns, um, but that's been requested as well.
I I do show driveway lanterns.
Okay, so, sorry, they 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 look. Sometimes they look at like some of the the legends and they look like fire hydrants, so I just assume you had plenty of fire hydrants.
It's a fire hydrant with a big light on it.
And the only, the only other comment I had was, and it doesn't matter to me, but in our rules and regs, it says, is Fontana Way a pro? And the only the only other comment I had was, and it doesn't matter to me, but in our rules and regs, it says is Fontana Way a proper name? And it's 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 said we can't have proper names, and it has to be approved by the police and fire and our rules and regs. I I don't know if if that's something we need approved or or if we want proper names or not. But I know that was that's we've been pretty consistent with that, so.
Could we put in quotes until confirmation?
Whatever we want to do. I just wanted to point it out. So those those are my questions. I thought other than that, I have no issues. So Shane, we would need a waiver request if the test bits determine that. Because I can see that Larry's, excuse me, Mr. Silver's Mr. Silver's forty foot layout in the back of his detail doesn't match up with ours, so he modified that.
Yeah, anything that devias from our subdivision rules and regulations would have to be waived if it's going to be consistent. So yeah, the the typical forty foot layout of a one to four foot subdivision includes swales on both sides. So we just asked that the applicant provide that waiver, and then I think they they did an appropriate job asking for that waiver and explaining to the board at this time.
We'll provide a letter and add it to the plan.
Just just so we can justify the waiver, does it make sense to do a couple of test bits in that those areas as well while you wrote there on Friday? You just and and to demonstrate that the where the water levels are and and all those locations?
I can see one issue if it's been disturbed with the existing dwelling and home area. So maybe Larry just chooses wisely. And if there's time.
All right. We just adjusted, just because we've been holding everybody else to that roadside swell drainage, and if we can, anything we can have to justify the waiver that it's in the public benefit, not lifting the road, et cetera, so. Mr. Tansy, I know you provided some comments, correct? Did Mr. Silver get those?
We received them. We started addressing them, but we thought we would listen to what the board had to say before submitting anything back.
And and before we really take any action on this, we do need to have those test bits witnessed by Mr. Tansy. That is Friday, correct?
That was correct.
Any other initial board comments at this point until we?
Sure, I would like to be street tree since we require them in all subdivisions.
Okay. Any other board comments at this point?
No, I'm good.
No.
Well, all right. So any public comment at this point, or any members of the public here to comment on the on the project?
All right, Mr. Chair, I will check the chat and see if anyone has their virtual hands raised. And at this time, I don't see anyone in the chat looking to speak, nor do I see anyone with their virtual hand raised.
All right, if there's no public comment and no more staff, staff or board comment at this point. I know we have to wait for the the test results and for Silver Engineering to address the comments from tonight and and from the the staff report from Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Tansy. Do we have a do we want to continue this? So what do we want to do? And when do you recommend we continue it to Mr. O'Brien?
Um, I think that August second. I know we just continue something to August second, but I I don't see many things here that need to be overly addressed. I think that the applicant in Mr. Tansy, Mr. Tansy provided comments very early on in this process, and that they were also provided very early on to the applicant. So I know in hand they're preparing. I think they just were preparing to hear what the board had to say. But yeah, I I think seeing progress, especially with Mr. Tansy's comments being addressed, as well as checking out some test bits, I don't see that the August second meeting wouldn't be feasible unless the applicant is busy that day.
Is it has it been an easement obtained on the the school district property yet, or is that not been obtained yet?
My my client is working on that. And alternatively to that, if for some reason he wasn't able to obtain that, then, you know, we we had the ability, if we had to do another water source, we could, or we could bring it back out, loop it and bring it back out the North Street.
Okay.
You know, I think and I think just another question, too. Have you have you looked at private wells in this area, Larry, or is it just because of the groundwater issues you've kind of?
Well, it's not because of the groundwater issues. It just seems it seems contrary to what you have here. I mean, you have got a ten inch water main going into the into the high school. You got, you know, sizable water main on the street. It just, I don't know, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to revert back to doing wells on single house lots, but
It has the
The last is as a fallback position. If that's what we had to do, then my client's prepared to have to do that, but it's not really what we'd like to do.
Has the has the Water and Sewer Department given the okay for sewer connections on the site?
They discussed the connections and how connections could be made. They discussed that with my client.
All right.
And that's the approach that we've taken.
Those are typically conditional on payment.
What's that?
They're typically conditional on payment.
Yeah.
All right, so last chance for board comments at this time. Public comments. Motion to continue to August second.
I can set a motion to continue to August second.
Do a second.
Second.
I'll say it.
Was that Mr. McDonald?
Geller.
Geller. So Miss Miss Rojas made the motion. Mr. Geller made the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Miss Rojas?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Let me ask, so we'll continue this to August second at six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Silva, you're still with us, right?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So next item under three, public hearings. We have a new public hearing. This was not advertised, though, Mr. O'Brien, correct?
It it was. It was advertised. I'll pull up the legal ad. Being it being a rescission and modification of a subdivision, we did have to the applicant did notify abouters and as well as we did place an ad within the paper. So let me pull that up so you can read it. Last public hearing of the night.
All right, so I'll go to the agenda first. Item three, public hearings new. This is Cranmore Estates. This is a request for rescission of a previously approved subdivision at Cranmore Drive pursuant to the provisions of M G L, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one W. The Bridgewater Planning Board Public Hearing Notice was advertised on the in the enterprise on seven, five, twenty-three and seven, twelve, twenty-three. It stated on Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M., the Bridgewater Planning Board will conduct a public hearing via Zoom on an application by Cranmore Drive LLC to rescind the subdivision under the provisions of M G L, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one W. The provision, the subdivisions, Cranmore Estates is located at Cranmore Drive. The requests filed by Silver Engineering and Cranmore Drive LLC are on file in the Office of the Town Clerk and the C D office and the town website. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the Bridgewater Planning Board. So Mr. Silva?
Yeah, good evening. Lawrence Silva, Silver Engineering Associates. The this one here is kind of like you don't see these too often. The last rescission that I think came before this board might have been Dantono Estates, maybe. And I know that way back in the seventies, there were other ones after ones that were done on Ashedad, which became the church property, which we recently just came back as a subdivision in recent years. But it doesn't happen usually that often to go in in the rescision mode. Now, the reason why it's in the rescision mode is that the the gentleman, Mr. Gumow, Gumow, am I saying it correctly?
Gummo, I think.
Gummo, yeah. He was the one that developed the property. He's the one that had the subdivision created. And then the first person that came along that wanted to locating there was Mr. Welsh, Ashmont Steel. So Mr. Mr. Welsh was in there. He gets operating in there. Business is good. He needs to expand. He buys another lot from from Clive, which is his first name. And then he goes back and buys another one from Clive, and he buys another one from Clive. It got to the point where he was really the only one in this subdivision. And it made a heck of a lot more sense that with his growing business that it just become a site instead of a subdivision. And he'd have more control on security down at the entrance. And it would allow for him to basically utilize the property without it being the potential for maybe one lot being sold to someone else where he had he had owned most everything. So he approached the owner about buying him out. He he bought him out. We provided some of those records to Shane so you could see that that did take place. And what Mr. Welsh would like to do is remove the lot designations, make it all a single site. And and basically it'll have to be re-designated as an old Plymouth Street address as opposed to Cranmore Drive, but basically have his old operation on on one particular property. And it's about a ten acre, a ten point four acres in total. And so this is a draft plan that we would finalize for we're suggesting that this is what we would finalize for the board's endorsement. Should you agree to rescind the subdivision? I know that there is an outstanding bond which was for some items that were associated with subdivisions that we would ask to also be returned to Mr. Welsh, who's already paid the prior owner that amount. And pretty simply, that's all we're trying to do is to have it revert back to a single piece of property.
So, Mr. O'Brien, what what are we typically? So now it's not going to be a subdivision. Do we need a site plan? What's what's the?
What I what I've requested Silver Engineering to give to the board is this what we call an eighty-one W, I guess what they call an eighty-one W plan, because it's one of my first rescind voluntary rescission of subdivision that I've seen. But the applicant would be providing this plan to the registry, so it would kind of usurp the initial subdivision plan that was approved. I believe in two thousand and three. So this would be the new plan of record for the site, and this was what was requested by myself and for the board to have, too. So we can view the site as one single parcel. You know, that they they've shown that Cranmore Drive LLC owns all the parcels in the subdivision. So they are allowed to petition for this rescission. So I would I would say that this plan provides that information of what the site looks like now. And it doesn't preclude this applicant from appearing before this board for future site plan review items if they choose to do some more work over on this location.
In fact, we probably will come back in the foreseeable future with a another building on the site. And at that point, what I would say is at that point, we'd submit it as a a site plan, looking for site plan approval. And what you are signing on this, you know, when we exercise this rescission would be, this would be sort of the base conditions for which we will then be showing you the changes for a a site plan when we come in with, you know, any other improvements on the property.
This is essentially an existing as built plan.
Yeah. And it also references on there all easements, any prior rulings, site plan approvals, anything else, so that if anybody in the future is looking for, how do you get from Cranmore to what's here now, this will be kind of a roadmap to get them there.
So so the Larry, the the roadway and everything will remain. This will just be more of a site plan now, right?
Yeah, it's just going to be a driveway. It's going to be a driveway internal to his his site. And actually, the way it's laid out, it enable it makes it so it's easier for him to actually work his property. Because he's been buying each side anyway. So he's been going across the road to kind of do whatever he was doing. So now he has the ability to control it all and not have strangers coming in. He'll be able to secure the entrance so that people just can't walk in from the street.
So Shane, in your in your memo, July fourteenth, you you indicated that an eighty-one X plan should be filed as well?
Eighty-one X or an eighty-one W plan. That's what they're providing here is essentially an eighty-one W plan.
An eighty-one X removes lot lines, right? Is that what is that what happens?
Yeah, they remove for
Well, eighty-one X is is a plan of existing ownership, not a creation of any new road roadways or so forth, or new new lots. This is because this is already under a subdivision that I I believe that it's it's probably the the more correct way to do it is with an eighty-one W. But the terminology or what the end result is is pretty much the same.
I would say that the the Plymouth Registry of Deeds only has a handful of these.
All right.
Yeah, they probably do have a handful.
All right. And then that's essentially, we're going to sign this plan that's that was presented to us.
Correct.
All right. Any board members have questions for staff or for Silver Engineering?
I just have one question. Larry, is the request for the money is going to be for this meeting, or are you looking at a future meeting to do so?
Um, I I would say that if they if there's a motion to grant the rescission of the subdivision, it might be in keeping with it to say that and return any well, well, shame. Money at the site, because this isn't going to be signed and and everything will be signed and finalized after an appeal period.
But I but I think
But it's part of a subdivision.
Right. But I think the last time we received a request for for bond monies to be released, Mr. Gummo wrote it asking it to be released to Mr. Welsh. And we asked for something more official than that, notarized or or something more official than that.
Sure.
So so I think we should just address what's before us, what's before us now. And if they want if they want to submit a request for for the bond monies, they can do that after.
Okay.
Well, that's right.
So do we have any other board comments or staff comments at this point?
Nope.
Do we have any public comment? Is anybody from the public wanting to speak on this or make any comments on this project?
Let me check if we had any. I do not see any virtual hands raised, nor do I see any in the chat.
All right. We have a motion, I guess. This is the first time we've made a motion like this, Mr. O'Brien, right? So do so I guess is the motion to approve or is the motion to rescind?
I would say that first we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
You're right.
And then approve the request for rescission.
All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Remove.
By Mr. Gemian, do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Geller. Any discussion? Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Miss Rojas?
Yes.
Let me ask. All right. So is there any discussion or deliberation on the application before us? And if not, do we have a motion to either approve it, deny the rescission?
Make the motion to approve rescission.
Mr. Gem, do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Geller? Any discussion? Miss Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Let me ask.
All right, we'll do the typical appeal process, and you provide us, I guess, a mylar and go from there.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, this is an approval not required, ninety-five Pleasant Street, map thirty-three, lot eighty, but we did receive a letter of letter of withdrawal. Is that correct?
That is correct. We received a letter, um, from, uh, the applicant requesting a withdrawal without prejudice. So I would just ask for the board to, um, vote to allow for that withdrawal and then we would return everything back to the applicant.
All right. So ninety-five Pleasant Street, this is an approval not required. They have, have requested a, uh, withdrawal without prejudice. Do we have a motion? And Mr. Gemian, do we have a second? Mr. McDonald?
Yep.
Any discussion? Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I may ask.
We'll see Ashley tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
All right. So other business, um, in, uh, under board business, Shane put this on here. We had this discussion at the last meeting. Um, I asked anybody that had interest in changing their role in the board to reach out to Mr. O'Brien. Um, currently I'm chair, uh, Mr. McDonald's vice chair. I'm willing to remain for the next twelve months. I don't know if Mr. McDonald is or if somebody else wants to, and I just wanted to see if anybody wants to have a discussion on that or continue the way we are at this point. Anybody, everybody good with the, the way the membership is at this point? Mr. O'Brien, the one thing that we never filled that we always had in the past was clerk, but you don't see the necessity for that anymore, is that?
No, typically from my viewpoint, I would always view the, the, the clerk is like the vice chair to the vice chair and someone that would take minutes. Um, but anytime we had, we do minutes here, staff takes care of the minutes as well as we have the entire board review minutes. So I, I don't see the necessity of having one. So, but, um, if we want to kind of continue what we're doing until.
So what do you want on this? Do, what's your, what's your?
I, I feel, I feel.
Do you want a motion? Do you want to just continue on? What do you want to do?
We can just continue on. We can reopen this up probably in January of twenty twenty-four, if that's cool with the board. Now it's been a long night.
And we typically, I think we're supposed to do this in Jan, I think the chat is says reorganization if we do it in July, right? So if it's clear.
Yeah, okay. We do July twenty twenty-four.
All right. All right. Um, board items, next meeting, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, it looks like we got Edgewood back. Um, we're expecting plans probably from them soon. Um, and it also looks like we got North Street and thirty-one Perkins coming back um, for the August second meeting. So please let me know if you're available for that meeting. Um, and we shall see you then. Hopefully it's a little shorter than this one.
And I see, um, Ms. Pagon and Mr. Haley are not here this evening. So, um, we want to make sure that they're here for the, the edge with development.
I will send them the three hour YouTube video of this and make sure that they watch it. And absorb the information, be a sponge.
Not, no, but I'm just saying for the, for the, um, we want to make sure that, that we have them for the Edgewood development.
Absolutely. I, I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate and make sure that they are available.
So can I, is, am, am I pronouncing your name correctly? Is it S- S- Stristy? Like, with, like Tristy with an S?
No, it's Stristy.
Stristy.
Yep, you are it.
So I, we had a quick intro. Oh, sorry.
Stristy, I got it.
Yep.
So Shristi, uh, Jane is our new assistant planner for the town. Um, so we welcome her. Um, this was a great, um, meeting to start off with, seeing just kind of the interactions with the public and the board members. Um, we had a lot of fun today. Um, so we welcome Shristi to the team and we look forward to seeing her more at planning board meetings and around in the future.
And you said, you said we had a lot of fun.
I had a lot of fun. I learned so much today.
Really? Okay.
The first, uh, project was fun, uh, the hotel one.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll keep rolling and we'll see how things go with it. Um, but miss, uh, if you want, Mr. Chair, I'll quickly go over planner reports and we can get people sleeping.
Go.
All right. So we'll, we'll do something. I'll do a doodle poll for, um, the, uh, Claremont site business. So I'll send that out within the next day or two. Um, and additionally too, uh, I sent around an email um, talking about, um, from our director, CD director, uh, Bob Ruly, uh, regarding a invitation for a workshop for members of the town council, planning board and zoning board on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock. If, if you guys could be there for that, um, we have, uh, Jamie Bratt, um, who is the senior vice president over at Boston O'Neil and Hillary Fagan, who is the vice president over at CBRE will be attending and kind of giving some insights on development economics, uh, market trends, construction costs, kind of diving into the economic aspects that, um, that they're look, we're looking for kind of as part of the revitalizing, revitalizing the heart of, uh, downtown Bridgewater, the vi- vision to reality, um, that Bob's, uh, big initiative that we've been kind of working on. So, um, if you guys are available on August twenty-second, we'd love to see you there. I'll be there too.
This, this is regular counseling or is it?
Uh, it, it depends on the, the quorum of it, but it looks like it's going to be a joint meeting between council, planning board and zoning board.
It'll be public too.
Correct. It would be totally public. Yes.
Um, quickly, I'll just, I, I usually don't give a, an update on community preservation, but the one item we did act on recently was the purchase of two lots owned by the Bonfiglio family. Um, adjacent to, I, I think it's referred to as the Styles and Hot Park on, on Broad Street. So the, the two lots are right behind, um, are right adjacent to Imperial Kitchen. There used to be a billboard there. The billboard's now gone. And we voted to recommend the purchase of those two lots, which they're not, they're not big. I think they're about twelve to fifteen thousand square feet each, but they provide additional access and, and packing potential for that. That Styles and Hot Park. So that's, that's the latest action we've taken in CPC.
Uh, has anything been done with Styles and Hart? Has any work been done back there or no?
Uh, Bob and Shane can probably answer that, that better. I think, I think from, uh, the meeting I was on last, uh, last CPC meeting. Uh, Michael Dutton was on and he, uh, had a, uh, an engineer, I believe his name was Brennan, Mr. Brennan. And they are developing, and I, I think a master plan, so to speak, with parking and trails and, and things of that nature. And these two pieces were an integral part of that design process.
Basically, they haven't done anything yet.
I, I haven't been out there. So I don't know if volunteers have, maybe Bob or Shane could answer that.
I, I think there's been some survey work and there's been some design work that's been implemented. Um, however, I don't think there's been any construction, but I think I can send, I can send over some plans that we have, um, as recent of. You want, you want more plans? I'll add it to the pile. Uh, but there is work, there is work in progress there. Um, they're looking at, um, ADA accessible uh, trails as well as regular walking trails, um, over there.
But.
Anything from the tree committee, Ray?
No. Well, we're at, we're, we're, we're still working on tree ordinance and there are a number of things, but, uh, it can wait.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Rully?
He's, he's got nothing. He told me. He's, he told me he's got nothing. You got a weekend at Bernie's situation. I'm kidding. He's fine.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
By Mr. Gemian, do a second.
Second.
By Mr. Geller? Um, any discussion?
Yeah, right.
Ms. Rojas?
Yeah.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes. Go to bed, Steve.
Did Mr. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And let me ask, catch that plane, Steve. What are you gonna be at before in the morning?
Yep.
Hopefully you're flying out of green.
Two of my flights back home. We had to drive twenty hours from North Carolina to get back yesterday. It was, uh, pretty awful.